Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Garner. Councilmember Middleton. Councilmember Woods. Mayor Tim Holstich. And Mayor Kors. All councils present.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, the City Council met in close... Did you get that? Sorry, okay, there was no reportable action.
Yes, this is he.
Hi, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the City Council and you have two minutes to begin your comments.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you, I appreciate what the city's doing and hopefully they're going to be very cautious in opening up. And my suggestion is that any projects or appropriations that the city has in place should be suspended. Because of the amount of money, I mean, following your agenda the last two months. And so I think that would be appropriate. And secondly, I think that as a taxpayer and a property owner, and I live here. I think would be appropriate if we assessed all properties at least $1,000 to help out. To make sure that we continue our core services, that is so important as far as the police and fire and etc. So I suggest that we have an assessment. And I believe the citizens of this, the people that own property here, I believe they would go along with that. As long as we, you know, if we can maintain our, the course of things. And also, and I appreciate what the city's doing for the homeless as far as the park by the library that we, if we continue to have a police presence there is wonderful. Okay, so I thank you and keep up and be safe.
Okay, thank you and we'll disconnect now. Kirsten McLean.
Yes.
This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Alright, thank you. Hi, Council. I'd like to voice my concern as a resident of Palm Springs. While I appreciate the city is doing all that it can to adjust to the lack of revenue coming into the city during this crazy time. I have to say that if there are any areas that can't be cut, it is in our public safety department. This city needs the fire department to be fully staffed and able to respond with a quick response time. Not only for the people with medical issues, but car accidents and God forbid a fire and earthquake, things we cannot predict. Our safety resources cannot be compromised. And as for the police department and the fact that our state is letting criminals back out, that shouldn't be. Inevitably will create more crime everywhere. Especially since the criminals are aware that there is limited reasons to be arrested and taken to jail and held responsible for their actions. The response times and staffing needs to stay strong. And during this time when everyone is scared, taking public safety away will only make people feel less safe than they already do. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you and we'll disconnect now.
Hello.
Hello, Stephen Height. This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the council for providing this time to its constituents. We thank you for your leadership during these extraordinary times. We would be remiss if we, during this public forum, not to take a moment to also thank all of the first responders in our community who helped keep us safe and healthy. My wife and I are parents of two swimmers on the Elite Otter Swim Team who swim five to six days a week at the Palm Springs Swim Center. On behalf of my family and the entire community, I'm asking for you to reopen the swim facility. The marginal tax dollars to keep the swim center open are negligible when compared to the enormous public value that benefits all of Palm Springs residents in many ways. I can't think of any other asset the city operates that serves a greater range of its citizens than the Palm Springs Swim Center does. People of every age and race and socio-economic strata use and depend on the pool for physical, mental, social, and emotional well-being. Seniors staying loose and fit, adults looking to get a workout in. Youth clubs and teens training for fun and competition, and adolescents and infants, all use the pool every day. Each year, the swim center is host of four to six weekend swim meets that are attended by hundreds of families from Southern California. Who spend money at our local hotels, restaurants, and other merchants, thus also providing valuable tax dollars to the city. We have all been quarantined in our homes with little outside activities. With summer approaching, people need to get outside, yet swimming is a life skill. Every year, we read about children who tragically drown in backyard pools. Where and who is going to teach water safety to the children who will be attending upcoming family pool parties? Public pool access in the desert is paramount to keeping residents cool, healthy, and sane. Please, please, please reopen and keep our pool open for all. It is one of the city's most valuable assets and it can really affect everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you and we'll disconnect now.
This is Linda.
Hi Linda, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Hi, this is Linda Barak.
You can start over.
This is Linda Barak. I am the President and CEO of Martha's Village in Hitchens. And I know that the city needs to cut their budget and take a hard look at what's going on in their city. And as the council knows, Martha's has a contract with them to serve the homeless. And this year, we've served over 530 homeless individuals and placed over 150 of them into housing. But I'm not sure if you're aware that what Martha's does historically is to look at a program and then try to enhance it. So what we've done is we've been certified by the State Workforce Development and awarded funds. And through Martha's, it was our, it is our intent to allocate $112,000 annually to increase the services through employment specifics. So I wanted to make you aware of that. And it is my hope that I know cuts have to be made, that I hope that they can be made gently in the area of serving the homeless population. Thank you.
Thank you Linda and we'll disconnect now.
Hello, this is Mike.
Hi, Mike Cassavan, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council and you have two minutes to provide your comments. If you could reduce the volume of your TV, please.
I just did that, thank you very much. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I am the Palm Springs Police Officers Association Vice President and I've served the city of Palm Springs for 14 years as a police officer and now as a sergeant. I am speaking to you today on behalf of not only the Palm Springs Police Officers Association, but for every employee in our city. Your city employees are the ones who keep your streets and parks clean. We are the ones who keep the fleet running, we are the ones who keep the doors open at City Hall. We are the ones who put out the fires and we are the ones who hunt the bad guys while you sleep safely in bed. We are also the ones who have wives, husbands, partners, children, or other loved ones who depend on us. Your decisions affect your employees, but also several layers of people beyond them. Your police department is known as being the best in the Coachella Valley and I would put us up against many agencies in California. We serve a city with a combined resident and tourist population of over 150,000 estimated per week. This number comes from the estimated 5 million tourists annually plus the permanent population. A fluctuating population of 150,000 served by 96 police officers puts us at about .62 officers per 1,000 people. That is far below the national average of 2.4 officers per 1,000 people. A reduction of personnel will likely result in a reduction of services, reduced public safety, and an increased risk to officer safety. There would be less of us handling the same amount of crime, or potentially more, with the same expectation of service. Measure D sales tax increase was passed in 2017 to maintain city public safety services. A reduction of city services would be a deviation from the purpose of that tax increase. The livelihoods of those you've relied upon in good times are now relying on you and at bad times. Do not impose layoffs. You have the ability to leave a lasting impression. It is your notice to get a good impression or otherwise. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you and we'll disconnect. Hello, Henry Weiss. This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council.
Oh, hi.
And you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Great. My name is Henry Weiss. I'm quite proud to be a 43-year resident of Palm Springs. It was my great privilege to personally know many of our pioneers. These were amazing folks who created the most renowned city of its size in the world. Francis Kracher, Frank Bogert, Nellie Kaufman, Viola Ortoner, Richard Milanovich, Ruth Hardy, Cornelia White, Wellwood Murray, and so many more set the stage for our entire tourism industry. Those pioneers insisted that Palm Springs become a full-service city with its own police department, fire department, airport, park, sewer plant, library, and more. It's because of the legacy bequeathed to us by those uniquely progressive founders that our economy has generally thrived over the past 82 years. As I reviewed the budget staff report that's before you tonight, I find it to be more a document of surrender than a fiscal solution to the COVID-19 crisis. It suggests decimating every public service the pioneers envisioned for our future, but especially the police and fire officers who protect us every single day. 12-plus percent reductions in funding from these departments should be considered beyond, they should be beyond consideration, especially now when they're needed most. Dismantling critical services developed over eight decades to solve a problem that most of us deem to be temporary is completely contrary to our longest-standing community values. Instead, I suggest making greater use of the ample reserves prudently built up precisely for this kind of downturn. In addition, I suggest investigating a safety services benefit assessment district that would guarantee no positions deemed essential by the city council be eliminated over the next few years. Since 1938, the good people of Palm Springs repeatedly vote to tax ourselves in exchange for an enviable quality of life. Regrettably, I did not find any suggestions in today's staff report for new and/or creative revenues as a possible bridge to help us through this crisis. Instead, it was limited to describing only draconian service reductions. I believe that our economy will return to its former glory in just a few years. I trust that you feel very much the same way. Please budget as if the city will recover. Please don't surrender, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you and we'll disconnect.
Hello?
Hello, Joe Cook. This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting and you're live with the council and have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. As the president of the POA, our officers are committed to providing the highest level of police services to the residents, businesses, and those who choose to visit the city of Palm Springs. Recent staff report compares the Palm Springs police staffing levels and police services with the cities of Palm Desert, Cathedral City, and La Quinta, and that is not a reasonable or fair comparison due to the fact that the city of Palm Springs has an extremely unique tourism population. As it clearly states in the recent letter the city council sent to President Trump requesting federal funding, there are over 5 million tourists who visit the city of Palm Springs annually in addition to the roughly 49,000 permanent residents. So in reality, our 96 sworn officers are policing the city which can regularly have in excess of 150,000 people at one time, and this will be the norm when the downtown arena is completed. So any type of reduction in staffing to the police department, whether it be sworn officers or support personnel, would have an overwhelming burden on the patrol officers' need to handle additional calls for service, making proactive policing virtually nonexistent. It seems more and more that criminals don't fear the consequences of their crimes they are committing due to the passages of Assembly Bill 47, 57, AB 109, and now where there is no bail for most crimes or the county will not even accept an inmate. Officers regularly arrest individuals in the city for felony violations and they are released on the spot without even going to jail pending the district attorney's filing of charges which may take months. Our current staffing levels allow us to provide the highest levels of police services. So please carefully consider any budget cuts to public safety as it would have a devastating impact on the quality of life our residents and tourists now enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you and we'll disconnect now.
Thanks.
Is this Frank Browning?
Yes.
This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. If you're watching live, if you could reduce the volume and you have two minutes to provide your comments and you begin when you're ready.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Frank Browning. I'm the president of the Palm Springs Police Management Association, which consists of our police lieutenants and captains. We understand and appreciate the work you all do in trying to keep our city moving forward. As such, we wanted to remind everyone that the war against our invisible enemy is not over and the war on crime will only increase as time goes on. The county jails are releasing arrestees at a rate never seen before within hours of their initial arrest. That is, those who are arrested for felony crimes are back on the street within hours of their arrest. This is putting communities, ours included, at an immeasurable risk. Cuts to our personnel and public safety who are sent to arrest our community and to our first responders and have a negative effect in our ability to effectively respond to calls for service. The option of cutting our public safety should only be used as a last resort after all other options have been exhausted. Again, after all other options have been exhausted. Doing so now will place our personnel at undue risk. Thanks to our reserve funds, you have the option to not limit the level of safety and service that Palm Springs Police Department currently provides to our community. On the eve of Peace Officers Memorial Day, we implore you to use those funds to suspend the $7 million identified in the non-personnel areas of savings before cuts to public safety are an absolute option. Finally, I hope that you would take a hard look into how the city came up with the numbers listed. You will be deciding on the lives of many people. Please ensure the numbers are correct. Together, we would get through this as one. Thank you and please stay safe and healthy.
Thank you and we'll disconnect now.
Hello, this is Wendell.
Hi, Wendell Phillips. This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Wendell Phillips and I'm the general counsel for the public employees of Palm Springs, or PEEPs. We represent almost 200 city employees that work virtually across the city, in the airport, the fire department, the police department, parks and recreation, city hall, fleet services, facilities and maintenance, the library, the streets department, downtown, animal control, and code compliance and vacation rentals. Our people are the heart of the city and proudly serve the citizens and visitors to Palm Springs. We'd like to raise these following points for the council to consider when you have to make the serious decisions that you're facing based on the pandemic. First of all, 15% of our members have already been 100% furloughed and are off the payroll. That totals 29 of our 200 people. 8% of our members took the voluntary early leave package. It's another 15 people gone that will save the city almost $1.6 million a year. And the remaining 75% of our people have volunteered to take a 104-hour furlough over the next six months to help the city meet its financial obligations. We don't believe that you can use the per capita figures based on the number of city residents without considering the number of visitors that usually come here. And everybody wants those visitors to come back. The staff's report has also got some holes in it. I think that point has been made by others already and will be made further tonight. I think staff is looking into it further. But the council needs to look at that very closely because we believe there's some things in there that aren't fully explained. Layoffs and furloughs will not rectify or even come close to closing the projected deficit the city faces. We think you should look at selling assets or living off reserves until we can find a way out of this. Hopefully, our cities and state will reopen and this financial emergency will go away when people come back. We certainly hope so. Thank you.
Thank you and we'll disconnect now. Hi, Mary Bell Nunez. You're live with the city council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mary Bell Nunez with California Partnership and Engage Coachella Valley. And this is accommodation of item number one and number two. I wanted to thank Palm Springs City Council and the mayor and the mayor pro tem. I wanted to ask, as you're having conversations about the budget and new CDBG funds or old CDBG funds and other potential funds, to think about how can we maximize our dollars, look at federal support, state dollar support, local support at the city level, city funds level. But we really want to ask for residential and commercial tenant rent relief support. We know that there's potentially maybe emergency solution grants that we've seen, like cities like Rialto or Paris or Pomona take advantage for city rent relief. And we're asking, you know, we know that with some of the reports that I saw in today's agenda, pre-year post-COVID-19 CDBG plan for 2024, there was a lot of surveys in support of rent and monthly assistance and small business support. So why don't we, you know, we've got already the survey where the community is supportive of these types of support. So we asked for the city to put together Palm Springs city rent relief ordinance for commercial and residential tenant support. And so this is in behalf of California Partnership, Todek, Bionihan, various groups. And we have petitions and we're asking, you know, rent relief support. And if there's also rent freeze, you know, we ask for that as well. But I know that at the last Palm Springs City Council meeting, council member Kristi Hossich mentioned that if rent relief could be brought up, and that's one of the reasons I'm also bringing this up too, since it was brought up also at the last city council. So please, Palm Springs City Council, let's introduce some Palm Springs rent relief through the new CDBG or ESG fund. Our communities are suffering through COVID-19 and let's help them. And we help them, our economy will get back on its feet. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you and we'll disconnect now. Hello, Laura Odison?
Yes.
Hi, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the city council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hi, thank you. This is, I'm Laura Odison, and I'm employed as a teacher for Palm Springs Unified School District, and I'm also a coach for elite otter skating. I read through the city council staff report and I'd like to thank you, Smiley, for the session on the parks and recreation portion of this report. Last year, my husband and I started Elite Otter Swim Team, and in the course of only a year, we went from four to 40 swimmers. Swimming is a sport that allows all individuals of all ages and abilities to exercise and compete at their greatest potential. However, in order for us to provide the services to this community, we need for Palm Springs Swimming Pool to be open. I want to share a fact with you, actually a couple of facts with you. According to the American Red Cross, drowning was the number one cause of death in children ages one through four and in children with autism. Additionally, 10 people die every day from drowning. Now, think about all the private pools that we have in our community. We need to keep this pool open. Last summer, we were hired to teach the summer program for the swim team. Over the course of the summer, we taught 100 children how to swim, which is wonderful because now they are all water safe. I want you to consider that because in all three of your scenarios, you have completely cut out summer camps and swimming for youth. On another note, I have a 12-year-old swimmer on my team that is three seconds away from making time trials cut for the Olympics. Her dreams and all the dreams of my swimmers are shattered if we close down the pool. As you keep in mind the pool, I want to end with this. There are thousands and thousands of pools in the desert, but there is only one Palm Springs Swim Center, and it cannot be replaced. Thank you.
Thank you and we'll disconnect now.
This is Liz.
Hi, Liz Loomis. This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the city council and if you could reduce the volume. You're ready to go and you can begin now.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment. My name is Liz Loomis and I chair the Little Tuscany Neighborhood Organization. I'd like to direct my comments to your second agenda item, which involves the general fund budget impacts associated with COVID-19. Little Tuscany is the neighborhood in which the properties called Boulders and Crescendo are located. As you well know, these lands were deeded to the city as part of a legal settlement with a developer. Our neighborhood organization has been active and involved with the general plan update. In doing so, we asked the committee and council to change the land use designation of these parcels to open space for residents and visitors to enjoy. Ideally, we would like them deeded to a conservancy trust or similar, which would prevent just what we're facing now. Now, we are concerned with reports that the city may try to sell these lands to raise revenue to fill its budget shortfall. Boulders is a particular concern because it's an entitled development from 2007 when developmental regulations were not as stringent as they are today. Selling the land for development may provide you with a short-term cash infusion, but it would cost more for the city in the long run by causing environmental damage, loss of open space, and mobilizing people in our neighborhood and environmentalists to oppose any development projects, and costing everyone a lot of time, emotional upheaval, and all of you political capital. We understand the position you are in. Certainly, we sympathize with it. No one envies what you face in the months and years ahead, but a short-term fix by selling either of these properties isn't the answer. And we sincerely appreciate you considering our request. Thank you.
Thank you and we'll disconnect now.
We understand the position that you were in.
Okay, William Hutchinson, you're live with the city council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Great. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members. My name is William Hutchinson Hutch. I know all of you. I'm a lieutenant of the police department and tonight I'm speaking on behalf of the Police Management Association. First and foremost, if we can all remember, it's National Police Week, and tonight I hope that we all remember the sacrifices that two of our officers made just a few short years ago. Moving into that, I've been a police officer with Palm Springs for 22 years and additional seven years in a volunteer capacity on top of that. I've worked with all of you in numerous capacities. I know, I know that we have great leaders at the top leading us through one of the most challenging times in our nation's and Palm Springs history. We've all the confidence in you and the world. I am calling because we are, as a management I am calling because we are, as a management group, deeply concerned at some of the information that was presented to you in a staff report that wasn't entirely accurate. Some of that were unfairly characterizing our agency as having enough personnel and more personnel compared to other local cities. And again, I'm going to echo the sentiments that some of my colleagues did, that that's an unfair characterization. We have 5 million visitors a year. Any agency knows, and any organization and city knows, you don't calculate the number of people, police officers, for a city to protect it adequately based on resident population. And there are several examples of that. I also remind the city employees and all the city staff and city council that the mission of Palm Springs is that Palm Springs is an inclusive, world-class city dedicated to providing excellent and responsive services to enhance the quality of life to current and future generations. That's extremely important in the decisions that you make in this budget moving forward. A cut of 13 to 20 police officers will devastate our ability as a community, as a city, and as a police department to effectively police this town and provide adequate public safety to those who live, work, and visit this beautiful destination. I know you all have a tough decision to make. I know that you will make the right decision. Godspeed to you and your decision process moving forward. Good night.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now. Hello, Mike Kovalev?
Yes, this is Mike.
This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council and have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hey, good evening, everybody. This is Mike Kovalev, a member of the Palm Springs Management Association. Turn my volume down. Hey, I echo the statements from my peers, Wendell, and some of the community members. We're venturing into an unknown, and one of the things that I've learned, and most importantly, in my coming up on 25 years of law enforcement, 22 with the city, is you don't venture into an unknown aggressively. And I think that's what scenario A, B, and C do. We've got to slow down. We don't know what's going to happen. And the aggressive stance of early buyouts, furloughs, layoffs, we've got to slow down, take a look, and see what's going to happen. You know, our comparisons to other cities, like my peers have stated, our slogan is like no place else. Our homeless count is second in the county, second only Riverside. We have more vacation rentals than any other city in the county. We have more hotel rooms than any other city in the county. None of that was taken into account in that staff report. Our calls for service are the highest in the valley. We need cops. We need cops to adequately service the community, but we also need our support staff to adequately service our community. It's been brought up that tomorrow's National Peace Office Memorial Day, Lieutenant Hutchinson brought up the loss of Gil Leslie. And you ask, how many cops do we need? Oh, on October 8, 2016, we responded to a residence in the city to handle a dispute over a television remote. A few cops got there. Three of them were shot. Two of them were killed. Three additional retired medically from the events that happened that day. There were never enough. Eight cops in total were there, and that wasn't enough. How many cops do we need? Well, we're doing great right now with what we have, but we can always do better. And addressing any concerns in an aggressive manner in terms of our staffing and our resources is only going to diminish our ability to adequately protect the city and to protect us, the ones that are out there protecting and serving our community. Thank you for your time, and I know these are some tough decisions. Dr. Ready is the hardest-working guy in the city, and I know that he will make the right decisions and guide you in the right direction. Thank you for your time. Stay safe, stay healthy. Thank you.
Hello, Ben Ryan. This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council and have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm a resident of Palm Springs. I've been here for close to 40 years and raising my family here with my wife and four children. Along with being a resident in Palm Springs, I'm also a small business owner. I currently own and operate a small and humble martial arts studio in the city. The business, although small and maybe insignificant compared to larger businesses and corporations, has impacted hundreds of lives, mainly residents of Palm Springs. I'm sure you can imagine with the recent shutdown of nonessential businesses, our gym is in jeopardy and is most likely facing a full closure. Even at the brink of closing down, the business stays afloat by the students and families surrounding it, very similar to how the city depends on its residents and employees. Apart from my gym, I'm also a police officer in the city of Palm Springs, and I'm extremely proud to be able to serve and protect our great community. Being a resident, business owner, employee of this city brings me a different perspective on our city's financial state, as these current decision-makings will most likely negatively impact every aspect of my life. The potential more than likely loss of jobs that the city is facing have been a direct result of the restrictions imposed in the city, where the benefits have not exceeded the cost. Rast decisions without preparation will result in inevitable loss and failure. Our jobs as city employees and public officials is to make decisions that will result in the best possible outcome for our people. It is my belief we have not done this as of yet. Let us make the best decisions for the employees of Palm Springs. Public safety alone cannot function as we stand now. We are well below the minimum staffing needed to provide our safe community. Nonetheless, these men and women still provide exemplary service to our community each day and are now in jeopardy of losing their livelihood. How can we honestly look these residents in the eye and remain to give high standards of their service we need for this city? Furthermore, how can we look at these men and women that serve us and tell them to protect and serve us while we place their lives at even more risk than we already do? If the city has the funding and reserves, let us make the right moral and ethical decisions to use this funding for what it's intended for. Let us not sacrifice the necessity for these positions when we will inevitably find ourselves with further financial burden and bear the responsibility for the extreme negative impacts.
Mr. Ryan?
Thank you for, yes, sir.
Your time's over. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, hello?
Hello, Bridget Miller. You're live with the City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Yes, thank you, City Council. Thank you, City Council, for your time. My name is Bridget Miller. I am a desert native, born and raised, as well as a homeowner in Palm Springs. In addition to my younger brother being a small business owner, he proudly serves as a police officer for the city of Palm Springs. I know firsthand the impact COVID has already had on their family. The current proposal of laying off numerous city employees, including police officers, is very concerning to me for multitude of reasons. I urge you to consider the lives and the livelihoods of not only those employees and their families, but the lives of the citizens that they have been sworn to protect and serve. Thank you so much again for your time.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now.
Hi, is this Mark Lowey?
Yes, sir.
Yes, you're live with the City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hello, my name is Mark Lowey with Axon Park Alliance. I'm the director of your skate park management firm. My company's been managing the skate park for the last seven years. We understand the severity of the situation, hope everyone is safe. We understand with the closures and what we need to do at this time. Definitely seen seven years, in the last seven years, some intense meetings over the years, from five years ago or seven years ago to our initial contracting, to two years ago to our contract extensions. I know you all have some tough decisions to make in this unimaginable time at the skate park with our management program. We have supported the police department with dramatic reduction in police calls for the skate park and overall swim center prior to our contract, thus allowing the department to concentrate on more important calls around the city. We feel we've done some amazing things in the skate park community, working partnerships that brought superstar Tony Hawk and other skate park viewers to town, all the way to our grassroots programs locally, including teaching kids skate camps and teaching people to ride their wheelchairs in the skate park. We've kept the skate park safe, been a layer of protection for the city as our insurance is primary and non-contributory while enhancing an already abiding community of action sports enthusiasts. Kansas needs a safe skate park more than ever. We need, the community needs our Parks and Recreation programs more than ever when we reopen. Our supervision and mentorship will be needed to ensure social distancing, sanitizing, and other methods of keeping the skate parks safe. We'd like to continue with our contract with the skate park that was granted two years ago, our extension. We would be more than willing to work for the city manager to find ways to reduce the cost of the city while keeping a high level of surface. We feel we've had a unique way of working with the youth while being a positive influence in each child's life at skate park. We hope you all, we hope you'll be able to discuss ways we can still support the city and youth when the skate parks reopen. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now. Hi, Tom Dole. This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you, Mary Coors and City Council members. I would like to comment on continued funding for the swim center. In addition to the financial consequences of this pandemic, we are now facing a serious mental health crisis with increases in alcoholism, insomnia, depression, and anxiety, and a physical health crisis due to lack of exercise, changes to diet, and overeating. Obesity and other underlying health conditions are the primary co-factors in COVID deaths, and there is a recent jump in childhood obesity. Lap swimming is one of the healthiest forms of aerobic exercise. It is low-impact, safe for almost everyone, and beneficial for all age groups. It is economically accessible as it doesn't require expensive equipment, and swimming is proven to promote weight loss and muscle growth, maintain healthy sleep patterns, and give an overall sense of well-being, accomplishment, and personal achievement. People with physical handicaps, mobility issues, or injury recovery find swimming to be therapeutic and rehabilitative. The swim center is our only local resource for lap swimming, and there are no private clubs that have membership lap pools. It is also a primary cooling center for relief from our summer heat, particularly for children and families who have no other pool access. Every dollar invested in the swim center is paid back several times over in the health and well-being of our citizens. There aren't too many budget items that we can say that about. The pool budget may sound large at approximately half a million dollars, but that's only $10 per resident per year. By comparison, the money going into the new downtown park would fund the entire school budget, the entire pool budget for 20 years. For the community to participate in lap swimming, the pool needs to be opened from 5:30 to 8:30 a.m. before the worst of the daily summer heat and sun sets in. It is possible to defer maintenance for roads and landscaping with little long-term impact, but human suffering has long-lasting consequences. Please support funding of the swim center for the continued health and well-being of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now. Hello, Rick Pentelli. This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council and have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Before I begin, let me thank the mayor, City Council, and the incredible tireless staff. Hold on, let me turn off my TV. I'd like to comment about a new coronavirus study. The chief strategy officer, Benjamin Miller, for Well-Being Trust in Oakland, California, has released a report this week, which is featured in the New York Times, Bloomberg, and other major news outlets. The report, the study suggests that conditions stemming from the novel coronavirus, which are rampant unemployment, isolation, and an uncertain future, could lead to up to 75,000 deaths from drug, alcohol abuse, and suicide. I can tell you, we're already experiencing this in our town. With this grim warning before us, I believe it is both obvious and inevitable that both the police and fire departments will end up suffering the brunt of this additional crisis within a crisis. The police and fire departments are the backbone of our citizens, of our city, and every citizen knows that. In order to perform their duties, they will need robust funding to ensure that they do not become overwhelmed, and in order for them to be able to do their jobs effectively without causing harm to themselves, physical or mental, or to their families. I firmly believe the city can and will become creative with new ways to fund the budget, but until then, I ask going forward that the city recognize this new report, its seriousness and scope of the matter, and approach it with, and approach this difficult task while doing your budgeting. I don't envy your positions at all with these difficult situations and decisions, and I hope that you all make the right choice. And with that, I thank you and ask that you all stay safe.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now. Hello, Jeanne Foote. You're live with the City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Okay, can you wait? I want to just turn this down.
Okay.
Should I start?
Yes.
Okay. I'm grateful that you're, all that you're doing in this crisis, what you're now facing is very daunting, but unfortunately necessary. However, as you make decisions, it's important that you have all the facts. I'm speaking tonight about the Palm Springs Animal Shelter. As you're all aware, the Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter operates on behalf of the city, one of the very few municipal no-kill shelters, the only no-kill shelter in Riverside County. In 2009, the council and the citizens decided that we could no longer tolerate a city shelter that was killing well over 1,000 stray animals a year and a building that was not fit for human or animal inhabitants. Plans were made to build a new shelter. The city allocated $5 million to construct the shelter, but we found out it would cost closer to $7 million. Friends raised the additional monies needed to fund and furnish the city facility, which opened in 2011. Quickly recognizing that the city did not have the expertise to manage the shelter, the city contracted with Friends to manage on their behalf. Since that time, the city has provided a little more than 40% of our annual budget. Today, that equates to 1.1 million of the nearly $3 million it takes to run our award-winning shelter. I mention all of that since we are the only organization that provides a city service that privately funds almost 60% of that service. For example, the wastewater treatment plant is under a management contract. The city, through taxes, provides 100% of their day-to-day budget. In this crisis, we have already suffered a substantial reduction in fundraising. We know that we are not immune to being considered for a budget reduction. However, all we ask is that you take into account that the income necessary to run the city, to run this facility, has already been substantially reduced by this pandemic, but our services have not and will not, as people can no longer afford to feed and house their pets. I implore you to look at the potential income instead of just cuts. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now. Hello, Tamara Hedges. This is Anthony calling from Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Great, thank you. My name is Tamara Hedges, and I serve as the president of Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter. I want to thank Mary Coors, the council, and David Ready for your steady leadership during this incredibly difficult time, and for being compassionate partners in animal welfare, leading the way not just for the Coachella Valley, but for the entire county, Southern California, and the nation. I also want to say thanks to the many residents who stepped up to foster shelter pets. Without their support, our shelter would be overwhelmed right now. We are proud that our organization has been able to continue serving our city safely, providing essential services to pets and people in need. The longer this pandemic continues, the more our lifesaving services will be needed. The staff report, however, showing the contract price comparisons for each Coachella Valley city tells only a very small piece of a very complex story. It doesn't tell the story of which animals live or die, which kittens are given a chance to thrive rather than being killed simply because they're under eight weeks old, which dogs are killed just because they're seniors with treatable medical conditions. Friends would like the opportunity to provide staff and the council with the context behind these figures, demonstrating that every dollar from the city budget goes to saving animals and helping our human residents. And if you would please refer to your packets for a summary that we sent over, the city provides nearly 40% of our overall budget. The city provides nearly 40% of our overall budget. Friends raises the rest through service fees and donations, both of which have been dramatically reduced due to the pandemic. We know the year ahead will be really difficult, and we look forward to working with the city to find innovative ways to reduce the negative impact of the budget shortfall on pets and people in need in Palm Springs. And I thank you so much for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now. Hi, Tim Watts. This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council and have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you very much, and good evening to the council. My name is Tim Watts, and tonight I'm speaking to you about the Palm Springs Animal Shelter. The Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter operates your animal shelter on behalf of the city, along with all of the community programs that are related to it. The city's contribution on an annual basis, as been stated earlier, is just over about 40% of our total operating budget. The remaining 60% is raised through grants, donations, adoption fees, and the like. The financial effects of the pandemic have affected all of these sources of revenue. Donations are down, and revenue from fees are down substantially. The pandemic caused the cancellation of the largest fundraising event of the year, the Foe Fur Ball, which represents about a third of the donations that are collected for the year. Donations are also collected at Village Fest on a weekly basis, which of course can't be done now. In spite of these economic hardships, the Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter continues to operate the city's animal shelter efficiently and effectively while still following our mission dedicated to the building, a community responsible for pet stewardship and the humane treatment of all animals. We've done everything in our power to mitigate this financial hit, including applying for and receiving assistance through the SBA's Paycheck Protection Program, which will help us to prevent having to furlough any employees. We have done these things proactively to protect the city's shelter operations and help preserve jobs in needed programs. I am asking the council to consider these actions we have taken proactively to protect the city's shelter when deciding on any further adjustments to our contract. As a member of this organization and as a resident of the city of Palm Springs, I appreciate everything this organization does to help our community and does so in a financially successful way. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate everything that you do for our community.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now.
This is Lauren.
Lauren Labarren. This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the city council and have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. My name is Lauren Labarren, and I'm the treasurer for Friends of Palm Springs Animal Shelter. I would like to address the staff report as it relates to the figures presented from the animal shelter. The city's budget of $1.1 million for the shelter represents approximately 40% of the total operating cost of the animal shelter's $2.7 million budget. All remaining funding is raised from other outside sources to carry on the mission of the animal shelter for the city of Palm Springs. Therefore, the funding from the city is critical for the shelter to continue to operate for the city. Secondly, I'd like to address the comparison of costs to other shelters in neighboring cities. The information as presented is not a fair comparison in that it does not reflect the volume of animals that are processed by the respective shelters. To be fair, one needs to look at a processing cost per case. Based upon reported 2018 spending and volumes, the range of cost is from $268 per intake in Coachella to $723 per intake in Desert Hot Springs. Palm Springs Animal Shelter's cost for that year was $333 per intake, one of the lowest of the entire valley. So while the absolute dollar amount of the budget of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter may look out of line with other neighboring cities, the better way to look at these costs is on a per-case basis. Doing this shows that the Palm Springs Animal Shelter is running extremely efficiently in processing a higher volume of animals, which benefits the city of Palm Springs and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now. Hello, Catherine.
This is Ed.
Catherine Smith. This is Anthony calling from the city council meeting. You're live with the city council and have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you so much for having me. Hi, I'm Kat Smith of Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter, donor and volunteer for the last three years. I work for myself as a social media and PR consultant, and I've been lucky enough to get to know the shelter and do segments about pets and adoptable animals on the news quite a bit, usually ridiculously silly segments with Brian Gallo, that became a regular thing because people love pets. I've been thinking a lot about the hardships people are facing, I'm sure like you.
This is Anthony calling from the city council meeting. You're live with the city council and have two minutes to provide your comments.
And like you, I, as I think about things... Sorry, getting echo. Something I worry about myself as far as the hardships, and I know you guys are looking at them and everybody else, is being able to afford written utilities or taking care of my sick mom, and what I would do if we both got sick or the bottom fell out of my business. I think at a time where terrible choices have to be made, one less burden is that I could surrender my pets if I absolutely had to to our no-kill shelter, knowing the love they will receive, knowing people will work hard to find them loving homes. Even better, I could first go to the food bank and be able to keep my four furry children fed, and if we got sick, I know I could count on the 600 volunteers and animal lovers we have to be a resource. That's my worst-case scenario, but I'm sure it's a reality for many, and more dire for many more. I think a lot about how things will look and feel as time moves on, and in hindsight, after this has passed, this forward-thinking is an important part of crisis communications and planning. I've done it at companies like Microsoft and Petco. I want us to be the town that has wonderful stories about how we supported the most vulnerable in our communities, and not just the people, but their pets too. If I had to go to the hospital knowing my pet could be placed with a loving shelter would be yet another incentive to be a part of a community that tried to spare meat hardships where it could. If I had nowhere left to turn to, whether from sickness or economic tragedy, I would want to thank the place that made sure my, or my child's, or grandchild's, cat, or dog, or bunny, or parakeet would be well taken care of. If we can lessen one hardship with compassion, taking care of our shelter will be a memory we're all proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Carl Johnson. If you're watching the meeting live, if you could reduce the volume, otherwise you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you very much. Hello. My name is Carl Johnson, and I'm speaking to you on behalf of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter. I realize that many people think of a shelter as just a place to go to find animal friends. What people do not always realize is that these animals often come to us under duress. They're often scared, disoriented, and traumatized. Early on, while volunteering on a daily basis, I realized that simply housing and feeding the animals was ineffective in helping them to adjust to their new environment and to learn new skills which would enable them to find homes and to form lasting relationships. Therefore, canine and feline enrichment became core programs in the shelter. Our techniques have improved greatly over the past eight-plus years, as have the skillsets of our behavior staff and our very active volunteer dog handlers and cat enthusiasts. These people and programs have helped us to create lower-stressed environment where the animals can thrive, thus increasing the number of adoptions and reducing our length of stay. Most importantly, they have had a significant positive impact on our live release rates. What does this mean to the city council? Well, it means that your dollars, combined with our grants and donations, are well-spent, and you can be proud of your shelter. I also appreciate everything that this council is doing in this difficult time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Hi, Keith Zabel. This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council and have two minutes to provide your comments.
Great, thank you. My name is Keith Zabel, and I'm a homeowner and resident in the Sunmore neighborhood. I'm here today to speak with you about the extraordinary work of Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter specifically related to the work of reducing and controlling the large population of community cats throughout the city and valley. We've made incredible progress with sterilizing, vaccinating, and microchipping community cats in broad effort to reduce the population, as well as reduce the number of kittens born in the wild. This program is called Trap Neuter Return, or TNR, and is widely recognized as the global best practice to maintain a no-kill animal shelter. If you are not aware, the Board of Friends recently had recruited and successfully obtained a $1 million grant from the Best Friends Animal Society, which resulted in a three-year valley-wide TNR program with our organization as the lead agency. I'm happy to share the results of this program. First, we pleaded over 11,000 span neuter TNRs from 2017 to 2019. This effort required hundreds of volunteers and residents. Second, the kitten intake at the Palm Springs Animal Shelter has now reduced by 50%. Third, the feline euthanasia rate at the Riverside County Shelter, serving the other eight cities, has reduced by over 75%. We should all be proud of the lifesaving work that's conducted by the Friends organization on behalf of the city. I want to thank the city council and the city manager for your continued support of our vision and mission. I want to thank our residents for adopting, fostering, and donating. Because of all this, our city is now known nationally as a leader in the public private animal sheltering. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Hello, Jana Hayes.
Yes.
This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting, and you're live with the council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Thank you very much for joining us today. And my name is Jana Hayes, and I have been a volunteer for over six years for the Palm Springs Animal Shelter as a kitten foster and with the community cat program. In that time, I've seen this organization grow into a professional, efficient, and more humane endeavor with its emphasis on no-kill. PSAS has become a beacon of hope for the residents of Palm Springs and the Coachella Valley through our community-based programs and our animal care philosophy. People come to adopt, to volunteer, and to donate because of our efforts and reputation. The financial support that the city prides provides, this city shelter, is the bedrock on which we build our robust commitment to the people and the animals that come into our care. PSAS has created a community bond based on trust that we are caring, passionate, committed, and good financial stewards. This bond is also reflective of the city's commitment to the shelter, and I humbly ask that you keep in mind the impact of our good work as you make these most difficult decisions. I appreciate your time and wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ru Tan speaking.
Hi, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. I am, I am Bill Ru Tan, and I've lived in Palm Springs for the past 25 years and wish to speak of the animal shelter. The no-kill animal shelter provides significant value to the city of Palm Springs. Our citizens valued replacing the old antiquated shelter enough to contribute over $2 million to a fundraising effort to build the current shelter. The community continues to express great goodwill and pride toward the shelter. However, during this crisis, public financial support has understandably decreased to a point that we already have had to significantly cut our expenses. Hundreds of volunteers value the work done by the shelter and faithfully contribute their time and energy. Programs such as low-cost spay-neuter services and vaccine clinics are also of value to this community. Free pet food and related supplies from the shelter's food bank is a real value to clients of the AIDS Assistance Program, the Mizel Center's Meals on Wheels Program, the Well in the Desert, and the Center's Community Food Bank Program. Palm Springs property owners value the shelter's Trap Neuter Return Program, aimed at humanely reducing the number of free-roaming cats and kittens. The animal shelter is valued as vital to the operation of our police department's Animal Control Unit. Finally, the lives of thousands of animals, both as pets and from the wild, are saved each year through the Palm Springs Animal Shelter's medical, transfer, foster, and adoption programs. There is real value in that. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now. Hello, Louis Smith.
Yes.
This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council and have two minutes to provide your comments.
Very good. My name is Louis Smith. I'm a volunteer at the Palm Springs Animal Shelter and a donor and a resident of Palm Springs. As you probably already know, Palm Springs Animal Shelter is the only no-kill facility in the Coachella Valley because we take care of our animals, we nurture them, and they are safe with us. I can only venture to think that if our resources are cut, our funding is reduced, what will happen in the upcoming year to so many of our four-legged friends? We must protect them. And actually, I just don't want to see this terrible epidemic virus claim any more life. That would be even more tragedy. So I ask you to give us some consideration because we really are needed in this valley. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Hi, Gabrielle. This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting, and you're live with the council. If you're watching the meeting, if you could reduce the volume, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hello, this is Gabrielle Amster, the executive director of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter. My gratitude to Dr. Reddy, Mayor Coors, and the council for your leadership as you navigate our community through uncharted territory. Everyone's lives have been dramatically impacted by the COVID-19 crisis, and that makes us all soldiers in our efforts to keep our citizens and animals cared for and our city financially sound. Over the past few months, the shelter went from a facility that was open to the public and relied on foot traffic to conduct business, to one functioning by appointment and virtual and telephone communication to provide some of the most important elements of our services. However, year-to-date, our stray, surrendered, and at-risk cat and dog intake has increased by 25%, and our adoption rate has increased by more than 61%. This increase in intakes and outcomes means our workload is only growing. Additional stats are detailed in the shelter report in your packet. We have continued to offer curbside vaccine services to the public on a weekly basis in order to keep pets healthy and our community safe from the risks posed by exposure to unvaccinated animals. We know we play an essential role in our community as it relates to animal health and as a safety net for people and pets. Over the past few weeks in particular, we have begun to see an uptick in animal surrenders as a result of financial hardship, not simply because of a pet owner's inability to provide food or veterinary care, but because they have either lost the income they need to keep their families afloat, or because they are fearfully anticipating it. We will work hard to find creative solutions in response to these needs. In partnership with Greater Good, we have accepted 26 pallets of food that we will distribute to pet owners, partner animal organizations, organizations that serve the needs of at-risk people, and those experiencing homelessness, with the hope that we can keep as many animals in their homes as possible and reduce the number of stray and surrendered pets at our shelter and other animal facilities across the valley. We thank our city government and our citizens for understanding the need for the Palm Springs Animal Shelter to continue to run the vital programs that our community relies on.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now. Hello, Eric Lemus. This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council and have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hi, hello. Good evening, council.
Thank you for having me. My name is Eric. I am calling on behalf of Palm Springs residents and California Partnership here in partnership tonight. We are, one first thing, you know, for the city taking that the leadership and dedication to firstly ensure, to let the city to first ensure that, you know, our residents and our backbreaking labor, small businesses have, you know, support from the city, but, you know, build an extra support system for the different efforts that we make with the moratorium. So essentially, we're asking the city to please continue to help explore more possibilities to bring, you know, rent relief to our current residents in Palm Springs. Additionally, you know, with the idea of, you know, new CBD block grants, that these funds, you know, would be allocated in such a way that would demonstrate to the whole things of the whole Coachella Valley that we can stand together this time. Thank you, and we look forward to being a support for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Daryl Terrell, this is Anthony calling from the City Council meeting. You have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hi, this is Daryl Terrell. I want to thank all of you guys for your leadership. This pandemic has made it difficult for the traditional approaches to budgeting to continue along the same path. That's why I would like for you to consider, City Council and Dr. Reddy, implementing a unique and innovative approach to budgeting called priority-based budgeting. The Government Finance Officers Association and the International City-City Management Association has adopted this approach to budgeting as a recommended best practice. It is a framework that would enable you to effectively match available resources with the community's priorities. The philosophy behind this is that resources should be allocated according to how effectively a program or service achieves the goals and objectives that are of the greatest value to the community. Priority-based budgeting turns the budget process upside down by creating a budget, not by looking at last year's budget as a baseline, but rather finding out what priorities the community most value, allocate resources among high-priority results through a scoring system, then budget available dollars to the most significant programming activities, and rethinking the way your departments go about producing them through conductive analysis to determine what strategies, programs, and activities will best achieve the desired result. President Franklin Roosevelt once said, "It's common sense to take a method and try it. If it fails, admit it frankly and try another, but above all, try something." Mr. Mayor, and City Council, and Dr. Reddy, this crisis brings opportunity to try something new through priority-based budgeting. All of there's a dozen of cities that, and counties that have tried this, and it has led them out of crisis, and it's time for us to try something new. So I hope this will be helpful to give the people a reason to hope again in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Edwin.
Hi, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. My name is Edwin Remorin. I'm so proud to be a new member of our city's Human Rights Commission. I also serve on the city's Census Committee. I am making public comments on behalf of Bayanihan Desert, which was founded to engage our diverse Filipino residents in the Veterans Track Neighborhood during our historic districting process last year, helping develop the first Majority-Minority District 1, now represented by our council member, Arisa Alena Garner. Bayanihan Desert organizers work in various industries, including art, design, education, and cannabis. Our families have small businesses in District 1. We continue to build our intergenerational approach to civic and community engagement. We want to thank the Palm Springs City Council and staff for their hard work and bold leadership on behalf of our communities during this pandemic. Thank you, City of Palm Springs, for providing ways for our residents of Asian, American, and Pacific Islander ancestry to report any anti-Asian discrimination through its website. I would address two agenda items in your forthcoming discussion today. For Agenda Item 1, let's help commercial and residential tenants now. I am in support of Maribel Nunez's public comments. Bayanihan Desert is in solidarity with California Partnership, Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability, Coachella Valley Immigrant Dignity Coalition, Todec Legal Center, Danza Azteca, Sitlatornak, COFEM, Comité Latino. We ask the city to start exploring rent relief, and what can we do as residents and organizations to help with this process? For Agenda Item 2, let's save our community centers. I am concerned, like so many of us in our city, with the austerity scenarios that have been outlined. As residents, we know the importance of our community centers. We need them. I am a product of the Palm Springs Youth Center before it became the DeMuth Community Center. We need to find creative solutions to keep DeMuth and James O'Jesse open, keep our youth programming going, especially with so many of our friends and families out of jobs. Do not close DeMuth and James O'Jesse community centers, which are both in District 1. As you can tell, District 1 is the major part serving the whole city. Help us keep us safe.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now. Baron Lane, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council, and I have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. My name is Baron Lane, and I would like to comment on the economic proposals you'll be considering this evening. When you examine the options before you, please have confidence that our city, its people, and our economy will recover. It certainly did after the 2008 housing crisis, and it will again. Since the incorporation of our city in 1938, people have come to our desert for business and pleasure. I have no reason to believe they will stop once restrictions are lifted. That being said, I realize the city is facing an unprecedented financial challenge, a challenge that I believe pits hope against despair. But I do not despair, nor should you. I do not despair that our nation, this state, or the people of this city will lay down or surrender their life to fear. Rather, I believe with every piece of me that our nation's people will grab fear by the horns, push it aside, and with renewed hope, step out from the restrictions still of each state of the utmost, because as human beings, we want to experience life and share it with others, which this current illness attempts to restrict. But people cannot stay in their homes forever, nor would they. They will travel, they will dine, they will drink, they will lodge, and they will spend because they want to, and because they want life's experiences, some of which only our unique desert affords. So have hope. Have hope that what drew crowds to our desert months ago will do the same in the months ahead. Prepare for the rebound of our economy by maintaining your workforce at all costs, avoiding layoffs, each layoff becoming a regret when our city buzzes with the level of activity we're stretched thin to accommodate. It's easy to say Palm Springs like no place else. I think what's hard, what's really hard, is knowing this adage is real, knowing that people will come back, and that our financial situation, however seemingly bleak, is only temporary and will improve. For those reasons, have hope, have confidence, and avoid layoffs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect.
This is Zach.
Zach Solomon, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council, and I have two minutes to provide your comments. If you could...
Yeah, just me. Okay. Hello, City Council. First off, thank you. My name's Zach Solomon. I'm a local Palm Springs resident, born and raised, and work in nonprofit arts, and really grateful for your leadership during this period of time. I'll keep this brief. I hope the city is continuing to explore further ways of providing rent relief and protection in response to the novel coronavirus. I hope you are exploring new ways of how to direct and educate Palm Springs residents on how to be allies for themselves and their fellow neighbors, specifically in regards to rent protection and relief. I'm asking that the city begins to consider use of the CDBG funds for commercial and residential tenant relief for struggling residents and local businesses. I hope you're staying sane and safe. Like many of the other residents have expressed concern about, local parks are a concern for me as well, and help keep me safe, pools, basketball courts, rims being put on basketball courts. These things are important to our mental health, especially with enclosed facilities being closed currently. So, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you again, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Hello, Stephen Papps, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council, and I have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Papps. During this period of uncertainty, this period of adjusting to what may or may not become a new normal, I see a great deal being done to appease the needs of certain parts of our community. Unfortunately, the parts that are the biggest voices, pickleball, tennis, golf, swimming, these are great things for the well-being of our older community members, but what about those individuals that have the smallest voices? The children of our community have been without their normal, without their school, without their friends for the better part of two months now. Many parents, myself included, rely on C Recreation Programs so that we can continue to be essential workers of this new normal. This isn't to say these programs need to be reopened immediately. That would be careless. But I do believe this is an area, like others, that needs to be addressed and not left by the wayside to figure out later. My son looks forward to his time at FKO. He looks forward to his time at summer camp. And with no word, no plans, no news, and an uncertain future, things look pretty bleak for our children who only want to be kids. The council would be doing our city and our desert community a disservice by ignoring the small but very important part of our community. The Palm Springs Mission Statement says, "Palm Springs is an inclusive, world-class city dedicated to providing excellent and responsive public services to enhance the quality of life for current and future generations." So let's include our kids in this discussion, in our plans, and most importantly, in our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Okay, you are live with the City Council, and you have two minutes. If you could, please state your name.
Thank you. My name is Robert Parotti. I'm a resident for 22 years and an employee for 24 years at the city fire department. I am committed to this community. I not only live, I work, I play, and I also vote here in this city as a firefighter. Please remember, our firefighters and our police officers are on the front lines every day prior to, and during, and after the COVID virus. We are a city that is committed, we're a fire department that is committed to our community. We're an all-risk fire department that protects the residents, visitors, employees, and even our airport with our visitors coming in in the masses. We need to remember that our public safety and our city workers take care of this city for all that visit, reside, and play. We are that city, and the city makes up the people, the public works, and the public safety with our structured government and an organized manner. Please remember, fire departments and police departments have national standards. Our city with our fire department does not meet the national standards of four personnel per fire apparatus for responding to these all-risk incidents. We're currently at three. The last economic turndown, we were able to reposition individuals after losing two apparatus and reducing our services. Please do not reduce our public safety for our fire or our police. Our police officers are maxed out as it is. Our city grows every weekend prior to the COVID, and will hopefully recover after the COVID, and we still need them to protect for our law enforcement. Remember, this city has its nomenclature above City Hall stating the people are our city. Please do not leave them at risk by reducing fire and police. Do not ask, and do not take a hasty reaction to this current COVID. We still have funds from the Measure J, Measure D funds, grants from COVID that will be part of the recovery process after the city has submitted for the money to come back into the city based on those grants. Thank you very much, and please take that in consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comment.
And thank you, everyone, for your comments, as well as all the people who have emailed them in. We do read those, and we really appreciate that. It gives us time to think about them as well, so thank you for that. As far as the agenda, I want to make two suggestions. One is I'd like to add brief councilmember comments and requests for the next meeting as our next item, which wasn't on the agenda. And secondly, I'd like, if council doesn't object, and I'm open either way, to flip the two items. I think getting the budget report and presentation first will have an impact on the CDBG, and I think that would be helpful. If people agree with that, if people agree with that, great. So why don't we move to councilmember updates and requests for the next meeting, so we do this together, so we don't have to do it twice? Anyone have anything? Councilmember Garner, you're muted. Oh, there you go.
Thank you. So first, I just want to thank Anthony for all of those calls. We always do that in an amazingly efficient way, so thank you. But anyway, I wanted to let everybody know that we have a new Facebook page. It's in Spanish, so it's going to have all of the information that you can get on the page, the Facebook page in English, but then there might be some other things that are unique to the community. And so that's, it is called, a little bit different, it's Gobierno Municipal de Palm Springs. So if you Google that or put that into your Facebook, it'll come up, so you can like the page, and you should be looking out for more content on that. We just want to make sure we're keeping people informed in multiple languages. That's really exciting. I'm not sure I have anything for staff right now, but I might. Sorry.
That's okay. Anyone else? May Protim Hosted?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a few requests. As many people know, we did some press release on this, but the full council sent a... but the full council sent a letter to Congress, to the White House, to our elected representatives on the federal side to request that cities like Palm Springs are included in any conversations around bailing out or assisting cities like ours. They have looked at really only assisting counties and cities over 500,000 people. Obviously, that's not the best way to do it, since our city is so impacted and so reliant on tourism, whereas other cities have more diversified economies and are more ready to weather the storm. So I just wanted to update the public on that, and I want to make a request. I think council has given this direction already, but I would like us to go ahead and send a letter to both the state and the county requesting the same, that as we know, the county received $431 million in the CARES Act. They've received that much or more in FEMA dollars. I'd like to see a plan from the county about what their plan is for spending that money. They can't fill their budget problems, which are significant, though less of a percentage of their overall budget than ours. So I'd like to see us at least bring back an item about our advocacy. We have to fight for every single dollar, and I think we should continue to look at all the avenues for funding. And then I have one other request. If we could, Mr. Mayor, who's been running our task force for business retention, economic development, I'm wondering if we can give a full update to the council and to the community about our plans, the work that we're doing on that, and the phased approach that the governor is proposing that we're following here in Palm Springs. I'm still getting a lot of questions about what we'll do on vacation rentals. Currently, that's controlled by the state, so I think it would be helpful to really consider as a council our reopening plan following the governor's phased approaches. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Woods?
I just want to follow up on councilmember Hostet's comments at the Energy and Environment, CBIC Energy and Environment Committee meeting today. There was a vote to basically advocate for funding at the county, state, and federal levels for those cities that are under 500,000 people in size, and that's most of the cities, obviously, in the Coachella Valley. So collaborate together with that. But the second part of that, which we just received today, that passed, was to also look at sub-regional openings versus regional openings, meaning that the rivers, the other side of the mountain, Riverside, may have different dynamics in opening than we do in the Coachella Valley. And so advocating for a potential difference in the opening process between those two. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton, anything? You're muted.
There we go.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Just an update that the Sunline Budget Committee met on Tuesday, and they have presented a budget that is balanced for operations for fiscal year 2021, and it is essentially even with the budget that was imposed for this fiscal year. But that was made possible by a very large grant that came through the CARES Federal Funding Act. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everyone. I have a few things. Some have been covered. But there is a House bill that would give some funding to cities, smaller cities, based on population, not based on lost revenue, which, in a city like ours, it would be based on a full-time population, and given our revenue is so tourism-dependent, which has been hit the hardest by this, not the way we've been asking them to consider it. Senator McConnell said it's dead on arrival in the Senate. Don't even bother. So we are working through various people and other means to reach out to leaders in DC. We have done outreach to the county and in Sacramento, but I agree we should bring a similar letter back to both of those for the next meeting so we could agendaize that. I agree that we should be doing that. Want to do, we can do a bigger presentation at the next meeting on the task force, but I want to do a little bit of an update. One of the things we've been working on from the very start of this, there are two things that have been most of our focus. One is being able to get PPE, the hand sanitizer gloves, face coverings that businesses need in order to be open safely. And so the chamber, working with, Hilton is in a process to do that. They've been asking businesses to send to the chamber the types of things they need, not the amounts. They're going to take the master list, and then they will have information on buying it at cost at a discount. We have asked the county, and I spoke to Supervisor Perez, that they also consider doing this at the county level and using some of their $440 million in CARES funding, which can be used for this purpose, for that, to help businesses throughout the county. And I was advised they are looking into that, but we haven't heard anything definitive on that. So as soon as we have that list from the chamber, we will get that out broadly. It'll be open to all Palm Springs businesses. So we really appreciate them stepping up and the Hilton offering to use their leverage as an international brand to help make that happen. The other thing that has been a big focus of our efforts is on restaurants. And we know that when restaurants reopen, we're seeing in a lot of states really low turnout of people going, occupancies limited. So we've been working on plans first raised by the arenas merchants a couple weeks ago, who wanted to see if parking lots could be used to expand their space. And Marcus Fuller on our staff has been working with us on all that. And over the last few weeks, the restaurant representatives, the four of them on the task force have been working on it with staff. And over the last two days, we had a call with the head of the California Restaurant Association on our plans, which included potentially closing down Parks upon Canyon, which we do on Village Fest, to expand restaurant space, arenas, parking lots, where there are restaurants, to really give them more outdoor space. We're the perfect place to do that, and a lot of restaurants, if they have to have tables six feet apart and can't expand their footprint, will lose money. And of course, that's awful for them, awful for the community, and awful for visitors when we come welcoming back. Assemblymember May set up a call with me and the Director of Alcohol and Beverage Control at the state level today. We had a really good talk. And so they are waiting to hear back from the state to allow exactly what we're proposing. And the way they would do it would be to expand the liquor license to wherever the food's allowed to be served by each local jurisdiction. So if we decided, I'll just use Palm Canyon as an example, to close that down during meal hours or dinner hours, just for argument's sake, they could expand their liquor license wherever we would allow food to be served. It doesn't even have to be directly in front. It could be shared space. They'd have to be demarcated in some ways, and they're recommending $100 over-the-counter permit. So in order to get ready for this, and what we want to do, I'd like to bring to the next council an agenda item to give direction to staff. Staff has done some diagrams already as we've tried to map it out. But we want to get ahead of this and be ready for when restaurants allowed to be open again, that we can do that. So if staff, happy to work with staff on it, and the restaurant groups are also ready to work, to bring back some ideas and then just give direction on what council's comfortable with and give some input on that so staff can move forward to start getting that ready. But it could be a great opportunity, so I want to make sure we share. We've been working on that, and there's reason to be hopeful that the state may allow it, because it will be safer to have the restaurants further apart outside, which will allow more people to go and feel comfortable going. The other request for the next meeting is we did receive a request from Supervisor Perez to sign on to a letter to Governor Newsom regarding reopening that obviously the whole council should make a decision on. I did ask if we could submit edits on Monday, and we were told we could. So councilmember, Mayor Proton Hostet and I submitted edits that we thought strengthened the letter, more specifics. We heard back that they might consider a second letter, but they're not going to make edits to this letter. So council can review it next week and decide if we want to sign on to it. And that's all I have. City manager, do you have anything before we move into the first item?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
City manager?
Yes, I'm here, Mayor. Good evening.
Okay, do you have any reports?
No, no formal reports this evening, Mayor. Ready to move forward with the agenda items.
Great. Thank you very much. So the first item is a discussion of, actually, the first item is a continued discussion of potential general fund budget impacts associated with the novel coronavirus fiscal year 2019. Adjusted budget fiscal year 2021 preliminary budget review. And just briefly before I give the staff report, I know staff has worked seven days a week, long hours, with every department head on this, and I just want to thank you for all your great work on it. I think it was really well explained and laid out, talked about the needs for accountability and transparency as we go through this process, which are so important in our community and to the council. I know there are things that we've gotten input on that you've already looked at, so we appreciate when we get input from everyone. And the only other comment I want to say is, you know, we all support all the things that are in the budget. We pass the budget because we support all those things. But I think we looked at a $12 million hit in the recession, and now we're looking at 75 to 80 million over 16 months. And so the reality is that we're going to have to figure something out to get through this. But I think there's full confidence that we will get through this and come out the other end strong again, whether that takes a year, two, or three years. I think we all have faith in this city. We all love this city. And we know there are some really hard decisions, and we really appreciate everyone's input and passion for all the great services and programs the city provides. They're really wonderful, and we're going to do our best to do this in a way that protects as much as possible and leaves us in the position to get through this as quickly as possible. So with that, if we can get a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I do have a report for this evening. And before I start the PowerPoint presentation, I would just like to note that, you know, every service in the city is important, and I need to thank all of the employees and the department heads for the work they do every day, which is so important. But reductions of services, you know, is certainly not what we wanted to do. It's certainly not what we do in Palm Springs. As you know, what it's taken to go from a kill animal shelter to a no-kill. And you think about that for a moment, the years of planning and preparation and getting the resources, and what it took from the volunteers, from the community. And the same, you look at our downtown projects and the convention center, the voters that they passed the measure, and then all the work that goes into that. So, you know, and then from there, the services of, well, let's open another fire station because it makes good sense for our community and add a paramedic crew. And then we move into, well, we're going to start doing social services. That is a responsibility of the county, but we've got issues on our doorstep, and so, you know, council had the resources to do it. So all that stuff transpires because we have a focus on the economy and our drivers, our tourism economy, what we've been able to do over the years. So for example, in about 2009, our hotel tax was 12 million, and pre-COVID, it's 39, 37. Sales tax around the same period goes from 7 to the high 30s. So that all basically gave us resources to do these extra things. So the last thing that we want to do is reduce services. But what we need to talk about tonight is the realistic, unprecedented COVID economic situation that's presented to us. And so what I want to do this evening, council, is just go through some ideas. This is for discussion only. As you know, there's a lot of changing information. We don't know exactly what's going to occur, but we have to make a plan. And so from a solutions perspective, we're going to try to get through this. Now, keep in mind, there's no one answer. It's going to have to be a combination, a combination of non-personnel savings, some personnel savings, and using different pots of money to try to get through this. But what we do know is we have to have a plan moving forward. So to get us through the initial immediate fiscal year and the next year, this is what I want to talk about today. So I have a few slides to show you. So if we could move first. So first of all, what is the impact? What's going to happen on this deficit? We've come up with about $76 million, and we have to look at it as a two-year deficit. The fiscal year 1920 ends June 30, and then we'll be into a new fiscal year. So this is going to go over two fiscal years. The current fiscal year is estimated at about $29 million, and next year is at $47 million. So that $47 million figure, aside from the 29, is just, you know, enormous. And so I think it's important that we articulate and convey to the community how we arrived at that number, because again, a lot of this is a moving target. So what we did for 2021 is we looked out at potential revenues coming in month by month, all the way through June of 2021, and we took a high and a low, not knowing exactly how fast or how slow the economy will recover. On the low end, it was a $33 million loss, on the high end, a $61 million. So what we decided to do is just take a mid-range, right down the center. It seemed to be the most reasonable, and then we would plan around that number. The revenue for the general fund, $121 million. As you can see, there's the areas of revenue and hotel tax. As you can see, the hotel tax, the hotel tax and the sales tax, which is a significant portion of our budget. And then the expenses, as you can see, the police and fire are almost 50%. And then, of course, the rest of the support services and other functions that we do. And so basically, we take in $121, and we spend $121. But I would note that you see there that PER's future cost reserve of 2.8, we've been able to build a bit of a reserve there because we know those costs are ongoing. And I would note that being able to put money into and build our reserves, particularly a specific PER set aside, has been an amazing thing that we've been able to do, and we've been very fortunate. All right, so the current year. Let's take this in two steps. One, how do we get through the current year, which ends June 30? We've got to deal with that first. There's really no real changes in how we do business can occur in a two-month period. But what we were able to do, knowing we have this $29 million deficit by the end of this year, is we calculated savings of about $10 million. How do we do that? We put a freeze on expenditures. We have frozen vacant positions, and we've looked at every expenditure we have to see what we can do between now and the end of the year on June 30. So we've come up with $10 million, and what that means is we'll have a $19 million deficit after that. And so what I'm recommending to council is that we finish the end of this fiscal year. We resolve this deficit. We take $19 million from our reserves, cash on the barrelhead. And unfortunately, we have to do that and then move on. The move on is the bigger question, but it's the important question because that's where we have to catch up. Now, what is next year, that number we talked about earlier, the $47 million? As you can see there, on the right, you know, we're expecting revenues of $125, and then all of a sudden, it's going to be 80. We hope. Now again, that could be more. It could be less. We're taking that mid-range. But as you can see, that is just an unprecedented amount of money to have to deal with in terms of a deficit. All right, so how do we do this? What are the components? Well, we first have to look at our fund balance, our reserve. So what is that? So we're looking at a deficit of $47 million. Our reserves are unrestricted $33 million. This in and of itself is pretty, pretty good. During the recession, 2009, 10, our reserves were down to about 7. We've never had these kinds of healthy reserves. It's just hasn't been what we do because, again, we want to spend the tax dollars we have on the services for our community. And so we have generally focused there and had less in reserve. What you see here is a result and manifestation of the cooking, rocking economy that council's been able to create over the last 10 years, and that has allowed us to do this additional savings. Now, as I mentioned, I'm recommending we use $19 million of that to get through the current fiscal year ending June 30. That leaves us with $14 million. Now, here we have this added PER's reserve. City council, for the last couple of years now, you've required that we set aside additional fund balance for the PER's reserve, which is for our pension costs that we know are going to be going. to be going up over the few, next few years. And so you've set this aside. Now, again, this is reserves. Council did make the provision that in the case of a, an emergency, you could use it with, with a supermajority vote. And so obviously, that potential rainy day is, is now. So what you have is total, un, total remaining reserves of the 14 and 16, roughly about 30 and a half million dollars. All right. So how do we go about dealing with this 47 million? So what I think everyone would expect first, and rationally, we would look at, what are the non-personnel savings? Certainly, the majority of our budget is personnel-related, we're service-oriented, and that's what is expected to be. But on the non-personnel savings, before we have to cut personnel, we, we took a look to see what we can do. Now, this list is rather long, and each one is important in its own right. The question is, Council, are you going to remove all of these or portions of them? And again, right now, for tonight, it's for discussion purposes, but as you can see there, it's the list of about 7 million. And that first number of 3 million, the operating budgets, that is going through each department and looking at those things, whether it's travel and training, supplies, the kinds of things that we think we could do without certainly for the year, one year, two years, and maintain the kind of services we need to do in our operations. If you look at the second item, landscape maintenance, for example, and you, you'll see, the 540, now, what does that mean? 540 is half of what our annual landscape maintenance is, and that's our parks and parkways. So we pay about a million dollars a year, but, but we do a, a pretty good job of mowing lawns and doing everything every, every two weeks.
Every week, Marcus? Every two weeks?
Every week, every week, because we're Palm Springs, and we want to do it every week. So by doing, eliminating it to a every two week, we can cut our costs by about a half a million dollars. So you see the same thing down a little below in tree trimming. That's reducing the amounts of, of trees trimmings that we, we're doing. You know, that's certainly an easier thing to do. What's less easy to do, of course, when you see the homeless services. Now, City Council has, has put this amount of money into the budget to deal with homelessness and do those kinds of social service programs that, number one, is the county's responsibility. They're not able to do it to, to what we need, and, and that's another story that we can get into. But because we had this issue, City Council appropriated those dollars. It was over and above what would normally you'd expect to see in the general fund, but hugely important. So the question is, that's an, at an expense that we may want to consider reducing if we can fill those gaps in other ways. Tourism is another item there. We pay about, roughly, 800, $900,000 a year just for the tourism marketing budget. This reduces that operation by about a half a million dollars. It's still important because of the economic impact it has on our other revenues potentially, but at the same time, this is an idea of how you, we can put together additional savings. So the bottom line is, when you look through that list, they all are important, but they're for your consideration. Since this staff report was put together, there was a few other items that we looked through to try and find for savings. That first item you see there, refinancing, actually, that's going to be the downtown bonds, not the convention center bonds, and we think that potentially next July, July of '21, would be able to refinance them, and that would be a bit of a savings. Wellwood Library, we just opened that a few years ago. That would be about a savings there if we closed that. Those dollars then could go towards the main library and maintain those services better than if we didn't have that additional 100,000. I would just note the animal shelter. So the animal shelter is a, is one of those situations where we contract with Friends of the Animal Shelter, a nonprofit. They do a, a, a good job of running our animal shelter. Our contract with them is about a million one, and it might be worth, I think, asking them if they could come back to us, cutting about $300,000 off that contract, what would it look like? And when we get that information, that would allow you to consider that. I would just finally note to the film festival. The film festival is important because the, the impressions we get from that title sponsorship is, you know, and Mayor May, you can help me here, it's in the millions, potentially billions of what that, that means. Mayor?
But there, I think it was 17 billion impressions, it would cost tens of millions of dollars in publicity for the city.
Yeah.
Just fast.
Just that. But, but again, if, if we took a hiatus from that for a year, that would, that would be saving. So the bottom line is, we've got savings of about a million six here, and then on this page. So going forward, those are things to consider. Now, obviously, there's a couple other parts of this, this project, this dynamic. And again, it's not one solution. It's going to have to be multiple, multifaceted. So these next two slides, I'm going to ask Marcus Fuller to discuss. They have to do with capital projects that potentially we could stop and use those savings over the next year and a half or so of the crisis. Marcus?
Thank you, David. Mayor and Council, as I outlined in attachments seven and eight to the staff report, if those of you following along online, page 56 of that staff report, there's a full listing of every account we have with the Measure J Fund. I color-coded it so that it would be easy to understand. We have a number of projects that were completed with some available balance that was yet to be reprogrammed, as well as some active but not yet, projects not yet in construction. And as I noted in that write-up, because we have a reduction in sales tax revenue this current fiscal year, we're projecting a 30% loss of Measure J revenue, which is nearly $5 million. And because the council did appropriate the full balance of Measure J funds for this fiscal year, right off the top, we have to cancel five projects due to that loss of 5 million in revenue. Those are shaded in blue on that table in that attachment. In addition to that, what we're recommending as part of this budget solution is to essentially sweep all of these funds, except for those that I've highlighted and read that are active projects, and essentially allocate those to offsetting the deficit. I do want to point out, there are some important projects here that we all have agreed and have funded, including the nearly $2 million that was appropriated to go towards the future library renovations. All of these projects are important, but we've identified what we think are all of the funds that could be available through the Measure J available funding, which was a little over $10 million. I do want to reference, as it's explained in the staff report, the downtown park. We did our best to try to explain the different options. As we noted, it's our recommendation that we continue and complete the park as originally designed and planned, and that's based on the fact that today, we've incurred about 2 and 1/2 million dollars of costs. A half million of that is for pre-purchased materials that cannot be returned because they are unique to this project. So if we were to cancel the project, a half million dollars' worth of different materials related to lighting and the water feature and other components would be wasted and unused. In addition to that, the, the police restroom, police substation restroom building is about 20% complete, including all of the underground utilities to it, and the foundation and some of the walls. So on that basis, we, we, we found that it, it makes sense to continue with the downtown park, given that that amenity will be important as the economy reopens. But in the alternative, modified downtown park would, would allow for some savings, perhaps nearly $4 million to be cut out of the budget for the downtown park, and that would provide for some limited improvements, some turf and some landscaping and some shade trees. But we can go into that analysis further later, and I have some photos, if you'd like to see what it actually looks like today at the site. In addition to Measure J, we outlined the capital funds. First, so for those that don't understand what the capital fund is, the city outside of Measure J allocates from the general fund to a separate fund for doing capital projects. And so last year, or I'm sorry, in this current fiscal year, there were a number of projects that were funded, mainly facility improvement projects, and again, looking for any avenue to solve the budget deficit. Following along in the staff report, that's attachment eight on page 62, there's a similar table that outlines all of the accounts that are available in that specific department of funding for facility maintenance projects. And again, going through the same analysis, we've identified 5.2 million in funding available, but I, I am being strategic and suggesting a million be set aside for emergencies because we do have roof leaks and other problems that need to be addressed that we can't over, always plan for. So that provides you, combined with the Measure J funding, over $14 million to go towards solving this deficit for next fiscal year. David?
Thank you, Marcus. And so again, here was the list, the abbreviated list of the canceled, potentially canceled Measure J projects and, and that total amount. So what does that mean? Now, that's not, here we go, these are your capital fund projects, Marcus. Right, okay. There you have it there. Give everyone a moment to take a look. Okay. So beyond that, where I'd like to go next is, that certainly is a good start. There's some difficult decisions to be made in that. However, to get to the level of savings that we're looking for with this kind of deficit, at the COVID, with the COVID, there's going to have to be some probably reductions in, in staff. Now, what does that mean? I would like to preface this by saying, the last thing we want to do is lay off anyone. The last thing we want to do is have anyone not working for the city who does, because that means we're going to produce less services. So, but to deal with this, we realize, okay, if we have to do it, just to, for, for the city to maintain itself as a going concern financially, what is the least amount we can do? So that's why we put together all the non-personnel items. That's why we're looking at canceling the, the capital projects. So it would have a direct result in, in reducing less personnel services to keep the maximum services going with personnel that we can. So we created three scenarios, and this is just for discussion purposes. Obviously, the first scenario is the, the, the least amount of, of savings and with the least number of personnel leaving, and then, of course, they grow with each scenario. So let me just walk you through this one. As you see in the top line, the hiring freeze that we already did doesn't affect any current employee. We have that savings. This potentially round of, of layoffs, which would be about 3 and 1/2 million, it affects every department across the city, and it affects them to the least extent possible. So for example, what does that mean? In certain departments, there may be less ability to process requests as rapidly as we can. There may be less people at the counter. In the safety forces, our, our goal was that the minimal is possible where, where you're still going to be, we're still going to be able to deliver our core services. But of course, there, there may be some delays in some administrative things or some other functions that they do. But the bottom line is, this first level, which affects, as you can see, 55 employees, which is 11 safety, 44 non-safety, it gives us savings. Now, I, I would like to note that there's two levels of savings there. The first one you see is 8.8, and the second at the bottom is 11.5. And I would just note that to, to lay off anyone in the city, what our process is, is there is certain costs associated. There's a, a three-month severance, there's unemployment for 26 weeks, and of course, there are benefits for health insurance for, for six months. So those all have a cost. So for the next fiscal year of 2021, we would have about 8.8 million savings. Ongoing after that is 11.5. So that's just how the scenario works. So in the staff report, it lays out how these reductions percentage and, and roughly the ideas in each department to achieve these savings. Okay. So then, we do scenario two. And I don't need to go through this, but you can see that it builds, that the total number of employees, obviously, then is 93. It is a deeper cut. And then scenario C is added to that, is if council did want to potentially change and remove the additional paramedic crew that we put on. And now again, we would still be doing paramedic service. This, we put on about two and a half years ago, an additional paramedic crew. If, if we went with scenario C and removed that from the budget and had these savings, then we would revert back to how we had done paramedic service prior, which again, it's every station just responding. Now, they will do that now, but of course, we will have one crew less doing it on each shift. So obviously, that would be a change. So let me just give you a scenario example. So let's just say, for example, Council, we took scenario A. So we're dealing with this $47 million deficit. What would it look like under scenario A? We have our non-personnel savings of 7 million. As Marcus indicated, the capital funds stopping those projects would be 4 million, the Measure J projects, roughly about 10 million. And then scenario A, which is the, the least number of employees that would be laid off. And of course, the, the EX, which is the, the, the management level employees, will all be taking a, a 10% salary reduction. That will be added to scenario A. But the bottom line is that then we've got approximately 30 million point seven savings. We still have a $16 million deficit, even with doing all this. We have a $16 million deficit. What's next? Okay. Council, we still have the 14 million in reserves, so that would wipe out the balance of our reserves. That's a hard thing to do, but it's possibly the one thing we could do to bridge us if the economy is going to start to get better. But then we also then need 2 million from the per set aside to match that $16 million deficit. And so that would take care of both this fiscal year and next fiscal year under this scenario. Now, if you went to scenario B, obviously, you'd need to take less fund balance. If you went to scenario C, it would be less than that. Now, the, what, what I would like to say within all this, Council, these are our best guesstimates. Regardless of what we choose, ultimately, we are absolutely going to have to watch on a daily basis, a weekly basis, a monthly basis, and report to Council, I would say, more than quarterly, probably at least every two months, of where we are with revenues and expenses, because one of two things is going to happen. Four, five, six months from now, we're really going to start to understand, are we on a slow ramp to recovery? As slow as it's going to be, at least it's going in the right direction, and that will guide your decisions then. Or are we going in the complete different direction? Obviously, that scenario will guide your decision. So we need to look at this on a month-by-month basis, report to you. But the bottom line right now is, we need you to give us some direction on the end of this fiscal year, using our fund balance of about 19.1 million to take care of the deficit in the current fiscal year, and then some discussion on next year's deficit and the combination of potential savings. This is a lot of information. It's a big decision. And as I mentioned to you, I'd recommend that, that, you know, after our discussion, we would continue this to our next meeting a week from tonight, next Thursday, where you could have some continued discussion and then give us some final directions on which, if any of these scenarios, that you would hope, that you would like us to pursue. So that being said, Mayor, Members of Council, we have our staff ready to answer any and all of your questions. Thank you.
Great. So thank you very much. The presentation really helped make things out in as uncomplicated a way as possible, given the circumstances. So what I'd like to suggest for Council is that we do this in two parts, because I think the first thing we need to at least have a discussion on is, how much of any general fund reserve and pension fund reserve do we feel has to be left for basically a year from June? Because if we decide we're spending it all, it changes the, the next conversation on the what. If we decide we're not willing to spend any of it, it changes the, the conversation. So does that work for folks? Does it seem like a reasonable way to do that? And then, at least we can have some sense on that and where we are on it. And just a couple of comments. As the longest-serving person, which is my fifth year, on Council, you know, that reserve got built up over the last couple of years. you know, that reserve got built up over the last couple of years for a couple of reasons. One, we really worked at it. In fact, as Mayor Pretum-Holstich and Councilmember Middleton know from last year, we cut things out of the proposed budget rather than using reserve, because we were concerned about a potential economic downturn. So, you know, to get to almost fifty million between the various funds is extraordinary for this city. We did set a policy, you know, shooting for no less than ten percent of a general fund reserve, based on the recommendations of financial folks and our auditors. They recommend between ten and twenty percent. We exceeded that twenty percent, which is fortunate for this moment. On the pension reserve fund, just so the public is aware, we know that, not even looking at the impact, the stock market losses currently for this year, that our CalPERS reserves for the exact same, our CalPERS obligations for the exact same pensions between that and returning to medical was going from about thirteen to fifteen million a year in twenty-fifteen to the close to thirty million a year in twenty-four. And so, if we use that, we're gonna have to find those cuts later on. So just to be aware that there's a big increase coming down the road in what we have to pay CalPERS. So I just wanna share that, just some factual information, and then get some council member thoughts on sort of the first scenario, A, just on the using all the reserves, or is there a level of reserves, both on the CalPERS and the other that people feel we need to keep? So that opening up to conversation, and Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, before I say anything, I wanna thank the staff and the leadership of Dr. Reddy and the others in the finance team, Ms. Polly, Mr. Fuller, for the work that they have done, and for absolutely every employee in the city of Palm Springs. We have exemplary people who have done absolutely remarkable work, and none of us want to be in the situation we are in today. Secondly, I want to express my gratitude to everyone in Palm Springs. This crisis has been extraordinary, but the number of new cases, the number of deaths, we have not had a death since April eighteen are a reflection of the seriousness with which our community has embraced responding to this crisis. With that, we will get through this. We don't know how long it is going to take before our city returns back to the kind of status we had before, but we will get through this. In the meantime, we built a reserve up for a reason, and I can't think of a rainier day than what we have had over the last two months. We have an economy that went from absolutely full speed to complete stop in a matter of days, at the height of our season. It is an unprecedented quickness with which an economy has gone into freefall. I think we have to use the reserves that we have built up. The CalPERS reserves that we have built up is obviously something that we can have conversation about, but those obligations have already been made. The expenses that we are going to incur are not guesswork. We know that that money is going to be due, and I don't think it's responsible for us to eat into a reserve that is there for future obligations that we can predict. When it comes to the balance of the reserve that we have, we got up over twenty percent. There have been various arguments as to what it should be, but most of the financial analysts say somewhere between ten and twenty percent. And I believe that by the end of the next fiscal year, June thirty of twenty-one, we should be much closer to ten percent of our reserve than anything else. That gives us an opportunity to use those reserves as we understand how quickly the economy is going to turn around. I applaud the city manager for coming back to us on a monthly and quarterly basis. One of the recommendations I would make going forward is, once we identify a set of cuts for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, that we treat that as a target, but that we have very specific quarterly milestones to come back and determine whether or not revenue is coming in in such a way as to confirm that that target is the realistic target, or is revenue coming in in such a way that we need to either increase the amount of cuts or decrease the amount of cuts. I don't believe it is realistic for anyone to say, I can predict what the next eighteen months are going to look like. None of us on February fifteenth were sitting there thinking, the stock market is gonna fall nine thousand points, then it's gonna come back four thousand points, and our economy's gonna crash to a blinding halt. We need to take our time and keep checking in to make sure we're making the right decisions based on what's happening, in fact, not what we estimated it's going to be.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Wood? Chair is ahead. Go with him.
I wanna thank Councilmember Middleton for what she said, and I would echo that. This is a rainy day, and it's probably the rainiest day we're going to see. I think ultimately, we have to take a very multifaceted approach to the whole thing. And that multifaceted approach is going to be, we're gonna have to realign, we're gonna have to look where our services are really needed, what's the best bang for our buck. We're gonna have to continue to advocate for outside funding the best that we can, whether that be through COVID-nineteen funding, care program funding, or whether it be through grants. I think we need to really take a multifaceted approach to the whole thing. In regards to reserves, I'm in alignment with Councilmember Middleton. I don't think that we need to be using up all of our reserves at this point in time. I think using them for the rainy day, which we're doing, is very important. We're using a substantial amount of our reserves, but we could likely have a catastrophe tomorrow, be it an earthquake or something else, and may need some reserves to actually buffer us through it. So to use, to deplete all of our reserves, I think would be irresponsible of us at this point in time. However, we are using, I think what has been proposed to us in all three scenarios, is a substantial chunk of our reserves are being used to try and maintain some semblance of a budget and services that we can provide to our citizens. And with that, I'll close. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Councilmember Garner?
Yeah. Sure. Thank you. Yeah, I think that it makes a lot of sense, especially when we're talking about PERS and keeping that money for what we already know we'll need it for. And then I echo my fellow councilmembers' comments regarding leaving at least some in reserves, because we don't know what will happen. I think throughout this process, we do need to make sure that we are having those regular meetings and figuring out what's going to happen. We know, I think we have a much better idea, of course, what we need to do for this fiscal year, but when we're looking ahead, there's just so much unknown. And so I think the more often we can be reviewing all of this, the better, but I don't think that we need to take such a dramatic approach right now, and using all of our reserves would be just very dramatic. But obviously, it is there for a reason, and we should use it responsibly. So I'm, I'm good with what's been proposed so far.
Thank you. Mayor Pretum-Holstich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I completely agree. I agree especially with Councilmember Middleton's comments. You know, this is hard work. I think that the governor said today, there's a person behind every number, not only for staff and, you know, our crucial public safety officers, and also our residents who rely on these services that the city provides. And so, you know, this is hard, hard work. We're in for a hard and difficult a year ahead of us, but I truly believe that Palm Springs will bounce back better than ever. I think that we do need to think about still, sort of not just the short term, but the medium and long term of investing in our economy, and making sure that we take bold action, that we really can be bigger once this is over. I think a lot of people still, you know, wanna flee big cities, they wanna come to Palm Springs. We're gonna have a lot of people who want to visit here and use our businesses. So, you know, this is a good opportunity to realign and really assess inefficiencies in our system, so, you know, where we can use technology, where we can kind of consolidate. I think this is a really good opportunity to do that, as we are an old city and we have some old models for how we operate, and we see that in comparison to newer cities like the budgets of Palm Desert or La Quinta. So, you know, I agree with the comments about the reserves. I support staff's recommendation to use nineteen million this year to fund our budget deficit. That's not easy, but I believe that, you know, that's taxpayer dollars that we're holding that we need to use to preserve our resources and our services for the public. I agree with Councilmember Garner about, you know, too soon to take really severe action. I think that staff did an excellent job, the budget subcommittee did an excellent job. He did go through it with a fine-tooth comb, but I do think we need to look at this as thirty-day increment, so where we are, what the, you know, economy looks like, what are the projections for tourism and all of our different industries, to do it so carefully that we're not taking too decisive of cuts for the next fiscal year, when we really can't say even what the next four months or six months will look like. So I support the conversation about the reserves. You know, for the CalPERS set aside, I agree, it's too early to have that conversation for this fiscal year. For next fiscal year, I do think we should look at it. You know, I think everything's on the table, and we wanna preserve as much of that as possible, but we also need to balance that with the need of our residents and maintaining our services, because I think after this is over, we're gonna need the same, if not a higher level, service to the city and to our residents. So I agree with the council's direction so far on reserves.
Great. Thank you. So I appreciate the conversation on reserves. You know, I think we sound like we're all in agreement with using what's recommended for this fiscal year. I mean, that is what reserves are for, that kind of true catastrophic event we weren't expecting, as well as an economic downturn, you know, of a smaller level, but to use as much as is recommended to get through this fiscal year, I think is right. I have a similar sense, I think, with where everyone was, that for the, as we move forward, you know, keeping a ten-percent reserve is important. It's obviously on a lower number than one-hundred-and-twenty-five million if we're looking at an eighty-million-dollar budget moving in, but, you know, going below that would put us in a really vulnerable position if there was a flood, an earthquake. I mean, to go below that, it also, as we're trying to refinance bonds, I wanna make sure by next week, we know that if we keep a ten-percent reserve on the budget, it's not gonna lower our bond rating, because both the convention center and downtown bonds we're looking at over the next two years, and I think there's potential millions of dollars of savings, and we don't wanna mess that up by not having enough reserves. So I'd like to know that data before we make a final decision on how low we go next year. And I think the CalPERS reserve, you know, we know that's coming, it will need more cuts later, so I wouldn't wanna go into that at this point, but obviously, if things are worse than this middle ground, we're gonna have to look at everything, because there's a level of service that at some point would just so badly hurt our residents and our businesses and our economy long-term, that we'll never get out of a cycle, and that's what we really have to be careful for, for next year. Does that give you enough to go on, city manager, for the reserve issue?
Well, if we could clarify just a couple things. So what I sense is, we're fine with using the nineteen million for the current fiscal year, so I think that, that is clear. One of the issues that we have to deal with and the challenges is going forward is, so just for example, in the Scenario A that I laid out, that's going to require that, that is a full year of those reductions to get that full year of savings. So for example, if we decide to make a cut six months from now instead of now, in terms of personnel savings, again, that would only be half of what these savings reflect, because you have to go through the full fiscal year to achieve all those savings. That being said, to get to this decision, we would have to decide on the non-personnel items, obviously, move them with the capital projects, and then which scenario, because each one of those still has a deficit that you're going to be required to use additional fund balance. So you're right, ultimately, once we know what that number is, and maybe, you know, it's nothing you can decide and give direction this evening, that's probably better for next Thursday, then we will know which combination of scenarios and other cuts to make. But, but the key thing is here, it takes you a full year of those reductions in staff to achieve that level of savings.
Correct. So the longer we wait, the deeper the cuts will have to be if things don't improve. So it's not like everyone's good with the recommendation for this fiscal year, and then if we're looking at, seems the consensus was, at least for now, not to touch the CalPERS reserves as we look at next year. Obviously, we could revisit that, and to keep a ten-percent reserve, probably on a reduced budget, so probably in the eight-to-ten-million-dollar range, but I'd wanna know from our bond person what that number needs to be to get us the best interest rates when we refinance the bonds, because that's gonna bring money. So I think as we look at these scenarios and sort of give at least some general guidance and direction, I think that's the range of numbers to keep in the reserve, what you, to bring back next week, is the CalPERS reserve and somewhere in the ten-percent range on the general fund reserve, which would still allow probably another four or five million of general fund reserve to go, to reduce to next year's budget, since we're thinking we have fourteen, fifteen million left in general fund reserves.
So that would put us in closer to definitely Scenario B?
Well, so there are a couple of things, that's what we do, what's laid out. One thing we haven't discussed, which you've shared, is the potential of sell assets, and what that could bring in, in revenue. And I know one of the speakers mentioned that, and I think it's an important piece. We, you know, we do have land that is, we have assets that could bring in revenue, and if that means keeping critical services for our residents and helping our economy rebound, holding those may not make sense. So that's a discussion, I think, that should be part of this conversation. So is that something you might wanna go through? And of course, we'll talk about use of all the Measure J money in the park. So all those are other sources of revenue, I think we have to discuss before you decide on which, how many layoffs you need.
The mayor, the other properties, that is an important point. What, one of the challenges there is that, no, it wouldn't be able to help us, well, hopefully it would be able to help us in the next fiscal year if we were able to find buyers, and, and that could certainly offset it. But Marcus, could you explain a little bit of those? But Marcus, could you explain a little bit of those properties and what those values are and how that would work?
We reviewed all of the properties that are owned by the city itself, that being properties that aren't owned as an asset of another enterprise fund like the airport or the wastewater fund. Selling those assets doesn't help the general fund. And yes, the city has probably over $200 million worth of real estate assets, but the, you know, all of those are parks, the city hall, fire stations, the golf course, other properties that can't be disposed of. There is one parcel that we own that we are currently trying to sell, which is the reservoir parcel on North Palm Canyon and Stevens. That's owned by the city itself. And then the other properties that we recently acquired are owned by the city itself, those being the Crescendo Boulders and other properties acquired through the Grit settlement. It is those properties that have the significant value noted in the staff report. We reached out to the appraiser who performed an appraisal last year on those properties, and he indicated that the current pandemic hasn't yet affected the commercial real estate market, at least that was his opinion. So it wasn't necessary or justified to do an updated appraisal at this point in time. Anecdotally, we talked to one developer who says there's still a market for high-end, semi-custom, custom home developments. So certainly, the Boulders and Crescendo properties have significant value if they're sold for development. They wouldn't if we retain them for open space. So that's an important decision that probably needs to be discussed here because it's those two properties that could ultimately be sold. We suggested it would probably take 12 to 18 months to really market those and attract the pool of investors that would want to purchase and develop those properties. And so we don't know that that, that those assets would realize any funds to solve next year's deficit potentially, but we're, you know, we're being conservative, assuming that that's not the case. So now's probably the time to have that conversation because, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, that, those assets can help solve a big part of this deficit expected next year and perhaps in the year after that.
So just one question on that, and then we'll look to the discussion, is let's say it takes 12 to 18 months through marketing. So if we start marketing them, and it's 12 months from now that we're actually getting the offers and doing everything we need, we will have a much better sense if we actually, what to do. If we wait a year, we're setting ourselves further back. And, you know, there's so much unknown. We, of course, we don't know that there will be a vaccine. We don't know if there's going to be a second surge. You know, the air traffic, the airline industry says it's 2023 before we'll be at pre-COVID, you know, air flights. So there are going to be impacts long-term, not permanent. And so I'm just curious what's involved if we start marketing it. Doesn't mean we have to accept an offer. Is that, that's correct, I assume?
If you gave us the direction, we could immediately start working with brokers to get these properties listed on the market. And I hope I didn't come across that we were going to wait 12 to 18 months. We were just guessing that would be the length of time from start to finish on navigating that process. But we certainly could start the process to see what kind of interest exists for those properties.
Mayor Protem Halstich, and then Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for raising this point. It's a point that I've heard from a number of our residents and constituents. I had a neighborhood meeting with my One PS reps for District Four today, and this came up, that people are looking at ways to save essential services for the city and already identifying that we have property that we received in a settlement that belongs to the people of Palm Springs and has a high value. So I completely support putting out, you know, starting the process immediately. That doesn't mean that it's deciding what we're going to do with that. That's a conversation that belongs to the community, and they can tell us what they value in balancing open space, balancing the need for housing, balancing the need for potentially $37 million that would preserve essential services like police and fire and library services and community services. So I strongly support starting the process immediately to look and see if there's interest. I would ask how we can expedite the 12 to 18-month process to do that. I assume some of that is expecting, it might take a while to get interested buyers, though I do think right now, we haven't seen the real estate market, I agree, be impacted, especially for these types of projects. But it definitely depends on how we price them and what our process looks like. So I ask that we, I think that, you know, we'd like to see any savings if we are able and willing to sell these properties to do it quicker rather than in 18 months, when we might need the funds a lot less, hopefully. So maybe, Marcus, could you explain, so we have to go through, just for the public to know as well, what would the process look like? So I assume we would do an RFP or a request or proposal process, or how would we list them? Could you lay out that process for us and for the public, please?
I'm actually going to ask our specialist in this area, Jay Verata, to kind of guide us through that process.
Thank you.
Evening, councilmembers, Mayor, Mayor Protem. It could be as quick as getting a broker onboard, and, you know, unfortunately, the structure for commercial real estate is you get paid when you deliver the sale. So it may also be advisable to offer a fee, sort of a hybrid fee and commission to a broker, to have them really make this their top priority.
Can you explain more what you mean by that?
When brokers take listings, they do all the work upfront, and then upon the sale of the property, they get a commission as their payment. So in one sense, that is definitely incentive to work hard and fast to earn that commission. But, you know, there are times when properties for sale sit on the market for quite a while. So being able to incentivize them to move that property a bit quicker, really work their network, identifying the right types of buyers, is something that may be of interest to the city.
And if I might add, I think, I think the challenge, at least with the Boulders and Crescendo's properties, is how are we marketing those? So I would imagine, and part of the reason why I estimated 12 to 18 months, is that I would envision somebody that's going to invest in that kind of investment would want to enter into a DDA with the city as the owner, a disposition and development agreement about how that property is going to be developed, and not just simply purchase the raw land with no guarantee that their investment would be returned in that acquisition.
Thank you. So my question was about the process. And so we would retain a broker, and the city already has a broker on contract. So we would retain a broker, and then would it be out for RFP, or we would just list those properties just so the public and all interested parties know what that could look like, and that we can decide now or later what action to give direction on?
Would need to be a selection process for the broker, but after that, the property would be out for sale.
So it would not have to go through an RFP. We would get the appraisal, and the council could decide what value they could take for that property.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. So that could be a quicker process than an RFP process.
Okay. Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to have to dissent on this one. I do not believe we should be rushing into making a decision around any specific property, most particularly Boulders and Crescendo, for which we have had enormous community opposition to development dating back for over a decade. That is not a decision that we can rush into. It is something that requires us to have an exceptional amount of community dialogue before making any decisions such as that. And this, those properties are only worth the kind of dollar values that are being attached to them if, in fact, there is a warranty that they can be developed. And we received those properties last year. We did so under an expectation that we were creating open space. So I think we have an enormous budget issue in front of us. I would prefer that, when it comes to properties, that we step back and identify all of the properties that we have, some of which may not be as valuable, but are far more marketable and far more likely to engender community support than those two projects. I urge caution, and I urge us to go slow when it comes to real property.
Just to be clear, if I could correct my point, because I think Councilmember Middleton and I agree, there's a lot of overlap. I think we should explore all options, so look at all of the parcels, I agree. And I think we should get all the information, including, and maybe this is where we disagree, but including if there are willing buyers for any and all of our parcels that the city might have, so we can make that decision, and the community can make that decision with all of that available information, instead of foreclosing options that might give us cost savings, and the community might weigh that together. So I didn't mean to indicate that I wanted to move forward in selling anything, just we wanted that information about what we could get.
And if we take it holistically, I agree with you.
Yeah, and I think that was also the point I was making, is I think we, we need to know what brokers think these properties are worth. We have one on Ginaut Trade. We have one in the Downtown project that Grit has first right of refusal on based on the appraised value, and we should look at all these. And then we can start that process now. We're not selling them now, we're not deciding to sell them now, but start the process now because if the decision is selling, let's say, one of those two that are worth the most versus cutting public safety, the library, closing the community center and pool, that's the conversation we may have to have. And I think keeping everything on the table is important. You know, we didn't have this emergency when we entered into that settlement, and we weren't looking at these kind of, you know, potentially cutting 100 staff positions. So, Councilmember Garner, do you want to? No, Councilmember Woods?
Certainly. I'd like to thank Councilmember Middleton for her comments on this, and I'm in alignment with Councilmember Middleton. I think, we don't want to be shortsighted. We don't know what's going to happen in a year or two years to our economy, and we may rebound. When you look at land use decisions, you live with them in perpetuity for the rest of your, you reach, you change the face of Palm Springs for a very long period of time. And I don't think that should be taken lightly at all. We are in the midst of a general plan update where people may want a vision, and people should get involved in how they would like to see this land used. Some of the land is, I think, has been promised to be open space or somewhat of a pseudo-promise. Other lands, such as the parcel downtown, seems to be much less controversial and maybe has a higher value. I'm not sure on that, what that value is. I mean, we had the appraisals. But I would be, I would caution us to be very cautious without a lot of public input before we just sell off our assets. It would be like selling your house and living in your car. I just, I think we need to be much more cautious, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else?
If I could add, Mr. Mayor, just wondering, because I agree we should have a comprehensive list. And so I know there are other assets that the city has, many are governmental buildings that we can't sell, but I think some of them are in downtown, might have other values. So I would like to see a more comprehensive list. It sounds like that's the majority come forward for the next meeting.
So does that give you enough, sort of what we're looking for, so we can figure out what to do there?
Actually, Mayor, just want to just confirm what, that, at least, the general direction for this evening was. If we're going to not take any from the PERS reserve, then that means, in addition to doing all the non-personnel things, you'd have to do those, plus Scenario A, which is about 55 positions. And then you, we were predicting you'd have to use two of the 16 million of PERS, so you'd have 14 remaining with Scenario A. If you hold the PERS aside with no taking of that PERS and a 10% of the unrestricted, then you're looking at about 90 positions, at least Scenario B-plus. So I just want to make sure, the issue of how much reserve, so if we have to hold the PERS separate and not use any of it, then we are going to have to go into Scenario B, likely.
Well, I think before we can do that, let's look at the Measure J and the Downtown Park because there's money there as well. So let's look at all those sources of money and see where we are on those before we get to cutting 90 staff and essential services at that level. So maybe we can pull up the Measure J project list and also the park to discuss.
So on this issue, just before, so is the council direction not to take any action to start the process to review with a broker, our city parcels that we own that might be able to be listed at least, so then we can get information and decide with information instead of without it?
Yeah, I would like to get the information. I don't necessarily want to make a decision on what we do, but I'd like to get all the information.
I agree. I'd like to start the process with a broker.
If we are looking at identifying all of the properties that we own, and it is very clear that we've not made any decision to move forward on any property, then I see that that is a responsible thing to do. But I don't want anyone believing that we have made a decision that we're going to sell any of these properties, particularly those that have been identified to the community as open space.
No, I feel the same way on those, and I feel the same way on property identified for affordable housing for our residents in need. You know, at some point, we're going to have to make priorities and decisions on those things, and everything needs to be discussed in that context. But we need the information to make those decisions. So, does that give you what you need, David, on that piece?
Yes, on that piece, it does. So we're going to start the process with a broker, so we could just, to get some general information, but no decision has been made on those yet. And then, Mayor, did you?
I'm looking at all of our, you know, properties that have some little value. Right? There's more than just those two.
Right, and those are the ones that are listed in the staff report on page 25.
Uh huh, correct. So now looking at Measure J and the park.
Right, so if we can have the presentation back up, I can go to that slide. Could you put the presentation up, please? I think they'll do that, and... I think they'll do that, and... Okay, so Mayor, this is the, we've got the park, Measure J projects, and the capital. These are the raw numbers. On the next slide, this is the Measure J, and then, and we'll go back to that, and then that's the capital. So I think you want to start with the Measure J projects, that's the list there.
Right, so if all those got put on hold, that would provide us 15 million dollars towards the shortfall. Correct?
I, we, I don't, I'm sorry, on that slide, it says 15 million. We have 10 million, 150,000 in the staff report, so... But that presumes that all of those projects that are identified in the staff report are canceled, and other projects that we were working towards, most notably the library renovation, that funding is taken and allocated and used to offset the deficit.
And they would be postponed until such time as we had the economy back and had revenue to spend?
Yes, and so the last line that's there, it says fiscal year 2020, 2021, available funds for new projects. So in the scenario we're projecting, which was the midpoint of the two cases, we will see such a reduction in sales tax revenue that for next fiscal year Measure J, we're only forecasting about 6 million total funding. Of that, we have the $3.2 million debt service for the downtown project, so that nets you 2.8 million for all your projects next year. That money is also scheduled in our proposal to go towards the deficit.
So in the three scenarios, you're utilizing all of this money?
Yes.
Already? So the things, so assuming we do that, the things that are then still up for question are on the other page, right, the downtown park?
Can you put the presentation back up, please? Thank you. Okay, so this...
I need you backwards.
Yeah, there we go. So the Measure J and...
The capital.
The cap, here's the capital.
Go one more back to the park.
One back to Measure J?
Another one.
No, the park, downtown park.
There we go, the park.
Or you're currently not recommending using any of that money. So like, one discussion of sort of putting all the other Measure J projects on hold for this year or next, which gets us about 15 million, which is already taken into account in the scenarios, and then whether people think we should complete the downtown park, do a modified downtown park. And any thoughts on that? Councilmember Garner?
I'm not quite understanding that recommendation for completing the park. Can you give me more information? Because it seems like it's a lot of cost savings for us to not complete the park. What do you see as a community benefit?
So I'm going to have IT post the photos on the display, so you can see the current condition of the site. So the contract for the downtown park was 7.6 million, and we have constructed and incurred costs up to about 2.5 million. A lot of the work was being done related to the police substation and restroom building. As you can see, the walls are going up. We have asked them to slow down and stop their progress on that part of the project because we haven't yet had a full discussion here in open session regarding the status of this project. But all of the infrastructure to that police substation is already installed, the utilities and all the related work. Because the park includes a custom-designed water feature, a lot of that pre-purchased material cannot be returned, can't be restocked, and as well as some lighting fixtures. So there's about a half million dollars of pre-purchased materials that if you were to cancel the project, would be, would not be used, and we wouldn't have a place to use it. That being said, we have estimated about a million dollars to, for basically leveling the site as you see it, basically putting a wall or a fence around the incomplete police substation and restroom building, and putting in grass and some limited landscaping. So we also have the issue of having to complete some repairs to the underground garage. The very outside estimate of those repairs is 1.5 million. So 1.5 million for that and a million to do some limited landscaping for a modified park, plus the 2.5 million incurred to date, that's 5 million, whereas the park itself had a contract cost of 7.6. So there's certainly a couple million dollars worth of savings if you were to direct us to stop all work and do a limited park improvement. But I just wanted to caution that there's some, as I mentioned, pre-purchased materials that can't be returned and the condition of the police substation as it exists now that they've partially constructed it.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. So one of the things that I'm not sure about is, for instance, it seems like, could we finish the substation that's partially completed and stop there? I understand we have materials that we aren't going to be able to use, but do we need to finish this park right now? Will those materials, can't those materials be put into storage and used at a later date? I mean, this is significant savings, and I understand that it's, you know, we're almost, we're spending 5,000, the park costs, or 5 million and the park costs 7 million, but when we're talking about reducing services for our residents at our existing parks and community centers, I think that's where I'm really concerned. Because we need to be able to have things open for our residents, especially as things reopen and people start going back to work. If we don't have community centers and after-school care, that is going to prevent us from reopening as an economy. So for me, this is going to be a beautiful project one day. I don't think that that day is now or two years from now. I think that we should be really thinking long and hard about how we're spending this money and making it count, and really thinking about what is going to be the benefit to our residents. And this park, as much as we want to think it's for our residents, it's not if it's for tourists.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Houstache?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a really hard one. I think that obviously we've committed to investing a lot of money in this park. We promised, I think, the residents who voted for Measure J that they would get a benefit. And when we've worked on the park for the last few years, that was our commitment to the community. I was on the park subcommittee for a short time, working on the design. I do disagree that though the park will benefit tourists, we did design a park with so much community input by residents of services like a water feature for kids and an amphitheater for large-scale events that doesn't currently exist. So I do think that this is a huge benefit to the community. Some of my questions is just about what is the true cost savings? So what's the cost savings to the general fund? Because I know about half of the, what is it, 3.5 million is from Quimby, which we have to use for parks, and then Measure J. So what is the actual, Marcus, you said we could save a couple million in canceling this project, so that looks to me like 2 or 3 million. Can you give us more of an estimate about what the cost savings to our general fund would be versus to Quimby?
What I had also identified in there is that we have accumulated more Quimby funds from all the new development. So whether you proceed with a modified park and stop the construction of it as it was originally designed, or you proceed as designed, one thing I would recommend is that we get direction from you to appropriate the balance of those Quimby funds and utilize all the Quimby funds we can for this park. That would free up the Measure J funds. So one of the challenges I have is until I get direction from you, I can't really sit down with the contractor and really do a final detailed cost of what's going to happen with whatever direction you proceed. But rough order magnitude was what was identified in the staff report. So 3.9 million essentially would be saved if we stopped and did the revised version. Some of that would be Quimby, some would be Measure J. It would be more Measure J if we appropriate more Quimby funds to replace what we spent out of Measure J. So it could be that 3 million in Measure J is released back to be able to use towards the deficit.
Thank you, that's helpful. And, you know, I haven't decided on this issue. I haven't really heard from the community, and I think it's a community decision that belongs to our residents. Do you want this park? Do you want it to cost what it initially cost? Do you want something different? But I would like us to ask, what's the value of investing in this park versus the cost to us? So I'd want to know, you know, what's the economic impact of the park? What's the benefit to our residents to have this amenity? I agree with Councilmember Garner. I don't support cutting significantly the very few community services that we already provide. Our Parks and Rec is such a small portion of our budget already. I think that we need to look at everything, obviously, but at this point, I'd like to hear more from the community before we make a decision about this, and then try to think about, you know, we want to be up and running. We don't want a hole in our downtown when we're back on and open for business. We don't want that for years and years. It's a bad look, it affects our businesses, it prevents the expansion of our downtown. You know, and I think it could be a big feature that if we work on this park and when it's open in the fall, people will come from all over to visit this park, is going to be a destination, and I think it could help our economy and help residents.
If I could just have a follow-up?
Yeah, please.
When we're talking about the Quimby funds, can we just, maybe our city attorney, can you just clarify exactly what the funds can be used for? Is it only new parks? Or if we were to, for instance, put, use that money to do bathrooms that James would suggest since they don't exist, is that allowed? Because it's a new thing, that doesn't exist.
The general rule is that it's for new parks, for new subdivisions. There are some limited circumstances in which they can be used to rehabilitate existing parks, but the general rule is it's for new parks.
Okay, thank you. So that's something I would be interested in, is if we can find out if there's any way we can use Quimby funds for other things that we're looking to improve upon in our existing parks as well. And I also agree with the comments that Council, or Mayor Protim Houstache, that regarding making sure our benefit, our community is involved and what the value is, which is what I was getting at in my more impassioned way. But yeah, if you can understand what exactly we can use Quimby funds for in those limited circumstances, I would appreciate that.
And just want to follow up with a question, because I think Councilmember Garner brought something up that made sense to me, which is, it'd be good to know, we sort of know what, we're not going to leave a hole in the ground, right? We're going to landscape and have some benches until, if we go that route, until we have more money coming in, when we could then finish the park. And that's how we have to weigh this. So I do appreciate Mayor Protim Houstache's comments about it being a boon for the economy as well, potentially, down the road. But I do want to know, from what Councilmember Garner mentioned, is what would it be if we finished the substation and the restrooms, so we didn't have that fenced off, but then didn't do everything else? We did the landscaping that's in the plan, but we also finished those two things that have been started being constructed, which was terrible, I think, just the fence around them partially built. Do you have a sense on that, or is that something you can get for us, Marcus?
Yes, I'll have to go back to the contractor and figure, and look at their schedule of values for the contract and come up, because it was a lump-sum contract, so we have to get an agreement on what the value of that building is versus the water feature versus all the rest of it. There's a little complication not to get in the weeds, because the west side of that police substation is part of the water feature, so there's a lot of details to work out, to the extent you move in some direction like that. I would want to get direction, though, because they have been proceeding, because this was a priority project to be completed by November, so if it's the direction of the council to put the brakes on the entire thing, I would want that direction given to me tonight.
Like brakes on the entire thing, like just stopping right now and leaving it the way it looks?
Until a direction is given, perhaps next Thursday, or whenever that direction's given after community input, just so that they're not proceeding too far along, and then the decision makes it more difficult the longer that we might continue to discuss this specific item.
Got it. Anyone else? Councilmember Woods, and then Councilmember Middleton?
I'd like to ask staff, did I hear correctly that to remove the infrastructure that we put in the foundations for the police substation, it would be about a million dollars?
That was a rough guess. I just wanted to make the point that to the extent the direction would be to just, you know, move in a different way where we didn't have a police substation, at some point, there'd be a cost incurred to rip out what we've just constructed.
Plus, we would have the cost, if I'm correct, of having built it to the degree it's built so far, even though it's not built out. So there would be a substantial cost to turn it into a flat park with just grass.
We were estimating about a million dollars for that part of it. Not, the million dollars does not include completing the police substation and restrooms.
I, thank you very much, Marcus. I'm in alignment that, you know, I think a downtown park, right, right next to a museum, right next to our downtown, is currently, it's been kind of an eyesore for a very long time. And most world-class resort destinations have some sort of a downtown with a downtown park that gives it an identity. And I think that's the vision that everyone wanted. What we're up against now is how do we fund it, right? And could that funding be better used somewhere else? And again, I go to, what's our long-term vision here? And if at all possible, and it could be staged in stages, where maybe we finish the investment that we have and don't lose a million dollars, and then don't go any further, if that's possible, and just grass it, I think might be a prudent move on our part for the long-term viability of our downtown, the viability of the park, and also helps us with our immediate situation of not having sufficient funding to continue the services that we have. So that's my two cents, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton?
Okay. I think my two cents is probably going to be pretty similar to Councilmember Woods, but a question for Mr. Fuller. I'm still struggling to understand with the half million dollars of product that we've purchased or ordered, why we cannot receive it and store it for later use?
We certainly can. We certainly can. I just wanted to be, ensure it was clear that if we'd never built the water feature, we would have, you know, these products sitting in a box, or light features sitting in a box. So certainly, if we proceed, if we were to essentially put the brakes on completing those features, and then perhaps years down the road, rebid it to complete it, we could utilize those materials.
Here was literally years of planning that went into the downtown park, and an exceptional amount of public input that went into it. The visioning sessions that took place at the convention center had an exceptional amount of community input. And Rios Clemente came up with a design that was, if one raves from people that I've never heard, agree on anything. And ultimately, I think we need to build it. It's going to be an absolutely magnificent addition to our city. We've just hit the issue that happens to anyone in the middle of a construction project when a crisis occurs, which, what's going to cost, be the best thing to do to move forward? Are we so far into it that we just need to finish? Or are there parts that we can pull back from? And so what I would like to see us do is set this for discussion again at next week's meeting, which will also provide the community an opportunity to present their feelings to us on the importance of this park. My leanings are to take possession of those things that we have committed ourselves to and store them, and then do what we can to provide a grassy area with a minimal amount of park benches and other kinds of things so that the area can be enjoyed until we get past this crisis and are able to complete the job. But I want to wait and hear from the public before finally getting there.
Chris, Councilmember Garner.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think that it's important for this project to get done. I just question whether or not we need to continue on the same timeline that we're on right now. And yeah, and I really am curious about what the community thinks about it. I'm also, we got one public comment that I saw that had, that was asking about funding for the park, community funding for the park. And I'm also curious about that as well, is can that be incorporated so that we can raise funds? Because I think there are a lot of people who would, who do value having their name on a brick, or, you know, some, something similar, and crowdsourcing in the same way that the Plaza Theater was being sourced for and funded for. I just think that projects like the park, if we can slow things down so that we can fund other things and see how things go, or if we can think of creative ways to continue the funding of things that will get funded, if that makes sense. So it's a lot harder to get, some projects is harder for people to donate to. The park is something that it's easier to get people to donate to. So if we can do things like that, but I certainly don't want it to never happen. I just question what our residents need the most right now, and so I would really appreciate those comments.
I also think we should look at some opportunities to have art in what would be the modified downtown park to help bridge us to when we could afford to complete the project.
So, Marcus, I think there's consensus that we all want to see this park completed, but want to know what options we have for slowing it down, making it usable, obviously, now, and slowing it down, given the crisis we're in. So I think that can be part of, you know, next week's discussion, make sure the public's aware we're going to be discussing that and all these things, because all these things are trade-offs. You know, everything in a budget is about priorities and trade-offs, and given this crisis, and trying to come up with 50 million out of a $125 million budget is just challenging. And so, but I do agree, I don't want to see it as a whole. I want to see it, you know, grassed in in the meantime, and, but I'd have a hard time spending an extra $3 or $4 million right now if it meant closing community centers and pools for our residents.
So if I can ask for next time, because I agree, we should delay or, you know, stop for right now until we have a community conversation. But when it comes back, can we have a lot more detail about the costs, the Quimby versus the general fund, maybe other options, like, you know, how much it will cost to grass it over, how much it will cost to complete the substation alone, you know, all of those options for the community, I think would be really helpful. And I agree with the comment from Councilmember Garner about looking into fundraising for this park, because if there, I know there is a lot of community support, and we could come up with creative solutions to fill if it's only a $2 million gap to the general fund, something like that.
Mr. Mayor, if we're finished with the park, can we talk about Measure J and the use of Measure J funds beyond just simply the park?
Maybe. No, go ahead.
All right.
It's the perfect next thing, so thank you.
I think it is. And Measure J was marketed to our community in a way that we talked about infrastructure, we talked about capital improvement projects, and I believe our city has in fact delivered on those. We have paved 40% of the streets of the city. We have built new structures in our parks. We have made capital improvements to our buildings, and we have completely redone our downtown. But we are now in an emergency situation, and I believe that any project that can be deferred for, that's fallen under the Measure J, should be deferred for at least the next fiscal year. And Measure J funds, as they legally can be used, should be used to make sure that we do not have to, that we can minimize the cuts that we make in our operational budgets.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like a better understanding of Measure J for maintenance, and let me tell you what I'm thinking. To stop slurry sealing, as an example, would mean very long-term roads would deteriorate, and the cost to fix those roads at the end of a year or two years could be X amount more money than if we maintained some sort of a semblance of like maintenance on those roads. And I'm not sure how much of that maintenance came out of Measure J and how much of it came out of the general fund, but I think it is important that basic maintenance that would keep us solvent longer term without financial ramifications down the line is an important point to look at.
So, Mr. Fuller, do you have some thoughts on that? I know because of the recession, when we stopped, we fell in a $80 million hole that we have been digging ourselves out of. And so what's the minimum we need to do so we don't go back, slide backwards? I think that's sort of where we're getting.
Yeah, it's a big number. So the idea was, once we invested, you know, nearly 50 million to rehab and repave all the streets, and everything was up to fair, good condition, you'd need to have a program where you're going through all the streets every five to seven years with a slurry seal. And that was about a $5 million a year cost. We were, as you know, budgeting 3 million a year out of Measure J and a million in the capital fund for 4 million a year going towards the street repaving rehab projects, which we've been getting some really good pricing, so that's been extending to a lot of streets, as you've seen throughout the city. And so it will be difficult to return to that level of funding, depending on how slow the economy reopens and the sales tax revenues increase, unfortunately. But that's the situation we're in.
Anyone else have anything on this?
I would agree with Councilmember Woods that we need to identify what are the minimum, the maintenance issues that just have to be addressed. I have spoken so many times on street issues, and it remains a priority. When we're down to the question of whether we pave a street or lay off a police officer, it gets really tough. And I think we have to save that police officer.
Okay, so you have what you need on use of Measure J funds, minus further discussion on the park?
Well, what we are going to do on the park, we're going to get as much information as we can on the park for next week, so you can make a decision there. And what I'm hearing on Measure J is that we are going to use that as expenditures for But again, that's a decision for, that can be a decision that's made next week, too.
Yeah. But assume that we're using the vast majority of that for figuring out the other pieces that you need to figure out to make up the shortfall.
And so, if I could, because of the numbers, so when we go back to, if we're not going to use the purse reserve, obviously, that's going to put us into the scenario A-plus, is my sense, but I think we're going to have to come to grips with, for a year at least, we're not going to do economic development, we're not going to do homelessness issues, we're not on these non-personnel things, and unfortunately, street paving for a year, a hiatus of all this, because we will need that to add to whatever we're going to do on the personnel side, because without those things, as hard as they are, the personnel side, if the equation's going to have to grow exponentially, and that obviously could be a problem in terms of service delivery. So just thinking on the non-personnel sides, we probably are going to have to do all of these things.
Well, on the homelessness, the crisis teams and those issues, one of the things I want us to look at before the next meeting is, we have some flexibility in the grant we're getting from the state. The county has gotten $440 million in CARES Act money that can be used for homelessness, and I think we have to look at other ways. We just heard from Martha's Village that they're getting a grant for 112 that could be used here in Palm Springs. So I think there are other sources of money there that we unfortunately do have coming in that we can look at for some of those services. But we can go through that list one at a time, I think, at the next meeting, now that the public sees all of that. I know in the supplement you sent us, you know, you also, you know, you mentioned the paramedic, the extra paramedic team, and reopening a fire station five, which was done a couple of years ago. So those are all things I think the community needs some time to live with, and I think just listening to the comments and letters we received and calls from police and fire is really getting a breakdown of calls for service that we're seeing versus the other cities as well, and getting, you know, as we look at those numbers would be helpful. But yes, I do think, given the shortfall, it sounds like we're using most of these resources. There are just some other big decisions I have for next week. Mayor Protem Holstich? You're muted.
It's doing so good. I hadn't thought that.
It was really brilliant, by the way. I thought that was great point.
It was so good. What are we, around five hours on Zoom? So, okay, so, yeah, I agree with you, Mayor, and I agree with the council about the Measure J projects and redirecting that to the general fund. For the items themselves, I would like us to look, for example, on homelessness. I know that we're getting matching grants from C-VET, excuse me, from the Desert Healthcare District. It'd be nice to look, is that included in this 530? Will we lose? I would like us overall to look at not just the cost savings in a very short-term way, but really look at what are the costs of cutting some of these programs? For example, our economic development budget, I know we need every single cent right now. We want to prevent personnel impacts, but thinking through, you know, are there investments for economic development that we need to make right now that will actually create more revenue in the future? For example, doing a business support program that would allow us to get our revenue in the future as opposed to allowing a large portion of our businesses to close? I think that we need to look at those impacts, same with C-VET, you know, same with tourism, you know, what is the other side of that? The cut, but also the loss that we would get if we cut those programs. So, yeah, more information, I think, on all of these items, and then we'll just hear from the public about what's important. Obviously, there's some easy ones to cut, but I think some of the economic development ones are difficult. And then last, on all of the county-focused areas that really the county is legally responsible for, the county is getting state and property tax funding to fund all these services, I'm wondering if we need to start a conversation with the county about if we cut these homelessness programs because we can't afford to and you're getting all of the money to do that, what will you do in Palm Springs? I think that's some of the conversation we have, because we can't continue to subsidize the county at this level. The county is getting so much money in the CARES Act and in other funding for homelessness. They get a large amount, and so we need to start negotiating with the county what that might look like for all of our services that they're responsible for.
Councilmember Garner.
I'd be happy to do that, or I don't know if we need a subcommittee, maybe it shouldn't be me, and we can start having that conversation with the county.
Yeah, I think that county responsibility is a really big one. The three big things that I noticed in the staff report were homelessness, library, and animal shelters. And so I'm just curious, I realize I don't know this, since the city has been providing these services, what has, what is the county's responsibility in funding or reimbursing us the costs that we spend on these? And certainly, I feel like where we have shortfall for animal shelter, where we have shortfall for library and homelessness, like Mayor Protem Holstich said, that's where the county should be coming in and assisting us with that chunk of money that they've received. Personally, I don't want funding cut from the library at all. I think it's a critical resource for our community, especially if people are going, well, people have already lost jobs, and it's going to be needed. And the same thing with the animal shelter, if the county is, should be funding these programs, then let's have them do it. programs, then let's have them do it. So I would really like to start that conversation and figure out what can be done there and how much money we can receive, even if it is only for these specific projects. I'd rather that we get something funded than nothing at all from the county.
Can I ask a follow-up question, because I completely agree with Councilmember Garner? Is the county still receiving the tax dollars or other funds to operate those services in our cities, so library, animal shelters, homelessness, affordable housing, possibly, you know, there's a large list? Does the county getting those funds and just not using them in the city of Palm Springs?
Yeah, I can address that, because that's been an issue that we've looked at really hard. And it's complicated, but in summary fashion, and this isn't exactly the numbers, but generally, this is what it is. Libraries are county responsibility. There's a percentage of the tax that goes to it. What this county does is aggregates all that in for a, they privatize and hire a company that does all the libraries that they do. But that being said, so the portion, the best we can figure, the portion for Palm Springs would probably be about $2 million a year. All right? So we get that $2 million, and we add a million to it. So in essence, we do receive this, these dollars. So this is, goes way back to the '70s, '80s, was the agreement that we had. So if we, let's just say we close the library tomorrow and said, "Take it over, county." They would probably take, figure out roughly maybe $2 million of our revenue back, and then they would run the library and probably spend about $1 million, $1 million, $2 million, is best we can figure. Now, that being said, let's say we decide to cut the library 25%. We wouldn't owe them money back, because we'd still be spending more than what we would normally get from them. So that's sort of the strange complexity of our relationship with the county on the library, and this dates back to the '70s.
But they are getting that, but not paying it in Palm Springs.
Well, they're getting it, but they are giving it to us. So we said, "County, it's your responsibility to do the taxes. We'll take that amount, and we're going to add to it." Branch of Mirage does the same thing. But most other cities, so for example, you know, La Quinta, Palm Desert, Cathedral City, they don't pay anything for their library, the county just does it, but they have a library that is much less expensive to operate. And they provide different, lesser level of service, yes.
Got it. And that's for libraries, not for homelessness or the other categories that they're responsible for?
Correct. That's, they're all a little different. Like, say, take, for example, the animal shelter. The county traditionally has provided animal services because cities didn't. Now, it's less clear if they're mandated to do it, but what they've done is, they've created their, for example, their shelter in Thousand Palms. However, it's not a no-kill facility. So we could, back in, when they did that, and this is some 15 years ago, each city in the valley paid a portion to buy into the facility, I think it was, been about $600,000 for the city, and then each city pays X amount per year for that service. So for example, Palm Desert, I believe, is roughly around the $300,000, is in the staff report. So we said, "No, county, we don't want to participate in yours. We want to do it ourselves, because having a no-kill facility is a value that's important to our community." And this is the important thing, we could afford to do it. We, and this is the miracle, we pushed our economy to the limits to do extra police and extra paramedics and no-kill shelter and a library and the pool and a partridge in a pear tree. And that's the beauty of good management and government that councils were able to do. This is so unprecedented that the hole is so big, that's why this realignment now, and it's, everyone's going to be pulling their hair out. So the, back to your question is, to make those adjustments back on all those different areas, it's going to take, each one has a different complexity, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you.
But it is doable in many ways, but it's just very complex.
Right. So obviously, working with the county is going to be important on some of these, but I also think, to the extent, you know, we spend more for our library, obviously, a lot more for the animal shelter, a lot of that's raised through private funds. We spend probably more per person on the pool than Palm Desert. There's just a lot of things we just spend a lot more money on, and I think we get value for that. But I think we're going to have to look at, rather than just closing down some of these, like community center or the pool, I think we just have to look at going back to those lower levels until we get through this. And once we're through it, we can think about adding more. But I would rather see us keep more things going, even if it's less days, less hours, than totally closing down our community centers and pool, because I think they are used by our residents. So, you know, we're not going to be able to do everything at the level we are, at least for the next year, and possibly longer. So coming up with ways to reduce that spending in each area, which I think you've done in this report, I think is going to be important. But, you know, when you get into closing the community centers, I'd really rather see less hours and full closures in places like that. Councilwoman Garner, and then Councilwoman Middleton?
Thank you. I agree. I think our community centers are really important, and we need to keep them open. Same with the library. I do want more information, though, about the programming and things that would be cut for the community centers and the library. I did feel like that was missing here. For instance, it mentioned in scenario A, eliminating after-school programs and youth programs, and I don't think that that works. You know, we need to be able to have a place for youth to go, and especially as their parents are beginning to work again, where are they going to go if we don't have these resources? So I'd like to have a more detailed breakdown to find out what exactly it is that we can cut, because I think that one thing that we all have to realize with this, and things are going to get cut all over. No one is going to be safe from this, but we want to do as little damage as possible. And the things that I'm seeing being cut right now from the community centers, I'm very uncomfortable with, so I would like to see more and find out what we can do. The other thing about all of this is I want to know what we can do with the valley. So we have this wonderful Coachella Valley, and I feel like we need to work together right now to figure out how we can fill the gap, especially when we're talking about programming. What can we do with other cities to make sure that this still works? Same with the animal shelter. Can, you know, Cathedral City has a much smaller shelter. Are they interested in combining and coming, becoming a one into the Palm Springs Shelter? Do they support that? Would they be interested in that? And again, finding out what we can do with the school districts to make sure that there's programming available for our children, but just really working with all of the stakeholders in these cases to make sure that our residents are getting the services that they need. And especially with people not having full-time work and needing places to connect and figure out the next step.
Anyone have anything else? You're muted, Councilmember Middleton.
I'm muted. My turn to make that mistake. I agree with what I've just heard from Councilmember Garner and from Mayor Corus. We need to look very specifically. The devil is always in the details. But I want us to preserve the legacy institutions that have made Palm Springs such a unique place. The animal shelter, the swimming pool, our community center, and our library. Those are features of our community that help define us. And in order to be able to preserve them, we're going to have to make cuts in staffing, and we're going to have to make cuts in the service hours that we have. I hope we can keep those cuts as minimal as we can, but it is simply not realistic to believe that there is a program in Palm Springs that can go forward without any cuts whatsoever.
Thank you. So before we end this, just for the city manager, oh, Councilwoman Garner, go ahead.
Sorry, do you mean end our entire conversation? Because I still have questions.
Oh, no, no, let's keep going. I was just going to sort of summarize where I thought we were and take a little break, but please go ahead.
Okay.
The items, I was going to take a break, so let's finish this one, if people can keep going.
Okay. Well, actually, you know what? I think I kind of veer off course, so it's kind of whatever everyone thinks. I think this might get into a more lengthy discussion.
If I could ask, maybe, that we take a break? I also have general questions. But then, I said I think they'll open up, like Councilmember Garner said, so maybe we could take a break and then enter into that? That would be great.
We'll reconvene at 10:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Good idea. Thanks.[1276.33]
So, Councilmember Garner.
Mayor, I have some questions, I'm not sure exactly where they're going to go. One thing that I'm curious about is how much the city spends in overtime costs just across all of the different sectors that we have. I'm wondering if staff has that answer now or if that's something that you can provide us at the next meeting, but I'm just curious to know what that looks like and if there's anything that we can do to offset some of those costs in the future.
We can, we'll definitely get you a definitive number for next week, but I think, Mark, we've got it, it's at least two, three million. Police, fire, streets, department, parks, so at least a couple million or more.
Thank you. The other question, I think, is that maybe will turn into a larger discussion. Can you tell us how much it costs to run the golf course and how much revenue we receive from it in a good year?
So, so we have the debt service on the golf course, which is approximately $800,000. Now, that is something that the city has always had to pay. The goal has been that the operations will pay for themselves. So, the operations is approximately about a million three, and that's for the operation, the maintenance. The revenue on a good year will break even with that. Some years, we, most years, we subsidized it, particularly in the years of the recession, we could be subsidizing it almost six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars. In good years, it's been down to a couple hundred thousand dollars. The best year is when it pays for itself, but we always have that debt payment. And we have that for approximately, Marcus, what, five more years, six more years?
Okay, so as long as we have that, then does it make more sense to operate the golf course? Is that what I'm understanding?
So, the catalyst for the golf course, and that occurred several years before I arrived, was to compete with the down valley in tourism, to be a tourism destination. At that point, the thought was you hadn't have the golf course. So, the council took on that debt to do it. And so now, we're at the end. If the golf course went away, would it affect our tourist economy? My sense is no, not today, it's not as important because, A, golf is, seems to be not as large an issue for our tourist destination now because we have so many other public courses. You have Ascena and several others where you didn't have earlier on. So, if the city said we wanted to get out of the golf business tomorrow, you could do that, however, you would still have to pay the balance of that debt over the remaining five, six years.
Thank you. So, the reason I bring this up is I don't expect, obviously, that it's going to have a big effect on this year or next or year after that. But as we're kind of discussing the budget and streamlining thing, I do think that it's something that we should talk about and consider and how that space would be, can be used. And is it best as a golf course? Is it best in some other beautiful, open space? Obviously, there'd be lots of input that we would need to receive from that as there's many homes around the golf course, et cetera. But, you know, hearing that we kind of break even with it and golf in general is, from what I'm understanding, not as popular as it once was, I'm just curious if that's something that we can explore as we move forward and are able to discuss other options for the coming years.
And just on that, for the city manager, can we, under property negotiations, also talk about the golf course at our next close session, as well as some opportunities that are being explored on that front?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Fortim Holsditch.
Thank you, that's helpful, I think that's a good point, and I agree that we should talk about it going forward. Just to clarify, so we owe, because I was on the golf course subcommittee the last two years or so before it disbanded, and we had talked about this. So, the debt service is 800,000 a year, the value of the property, as I recall, is like six or so million, and then we owe in total a million dollars. So, what would it, is that right? What would it look like if we sold that parcel to whoever?
Well, we actually went through this a few years ago, and the challenge in selling it, any of the golf companies that we looked at, they wouldn't see that as a value that they could make money on if they had to pay that level for the land. More importantly, let's say you wanted to sell it to a developer to do housing, you couldn't do that because it's on a floodplain. So, we almost have an asset that we can't sell. Now, let's just say we got out of the golf business, you still had to pay the debt, but then you'd also have to deal with the maintenance of that whole area. At least running the golf operation on basically good years, it pays for itself on the maintenance side. So, unless you would let it just go back to desert scape and let it remain that in the natural state, you would still have a pretty significant cost to maintain it. You certainly couldn't maintain it as a green belt.
Thanks. Could you correct my numbers a bit if you have them there or maybe include it for the next meeting about the thousands?
Yeah, we do have them.
Yeah, so, the debt that's owed on the golf course is about five and a half million as of the end of this coming June, and our debt service payments are just about 940,000 The value of the property itself, I think, was estimated less than what we owed on the debt service, so selling it didn't, you know, make sense. And in considering alternatives for that golf course, keep in mind, there's two different golf courses. There's the resort course, which is essentially through the Takwitz Creek, but there's also the Legends Course, which was developed intentionally for golf course communities, and those fairways are not within the Takwitz Creek floodplain, but they're very narrow fairways, and we'd have to really give some thought if that was the direction on moving into a different direction on that being a golf course. A lot of thought there with the homes that are built along those fairways. But we generally have expenditures, the operations of that business enterprise, the expenditures do exceed on an annual basis the revenues. We had issues with weather last year, we obviously had to close down since March and just reopened this last Monday, so on top of the debt service, there's usually a couple hundred thousand dollars subsidy needed for that enterprise.
Can we refinance any of our debt service? You said that on other bonds, our other debt, can we do that?
We've refinanced, I think that one's been refinanced about five times over the years. So, yes, that's something that we have our bond council looking at, but we're not certain that one would be as ripe to refinance as potentially the downtown at this point.
Thanks. So, if I may, one thing along with that, when we're talking about services that we provide, I think the golf course is an example of something that, should we charge more for people to golf there? And I, correct me if I'm not a golfer, but the last I heard was that it was a pretty sweet deal. It's very affordable, you get lunch and two drinks and all this stuff. If that is true, maybe we can think about raising the cost, maybe not having drinks and lunch, et cetera. But then that goes for other services as well, and I am still interested in finding out if we could start charging for certain things that maybe we didn't charge for or increase the cost of things, but not in the extravagant way that makes it prohibitive to the access to the community, but are there different things that we could do to allow for certain things to move forward for the community, but just needing to not subsidize it quite as much?
We can discuss as far as the golf is concerned with Sentry Golf, our operator. I know that they analyze what all the golf courses are charging for different rates of play. I think what you're mentioning is a program that is in the less desirable time of day for golf, so they're trying to remain competitive in the market and are always adjusting those rates to ensure that, you know, they remain competitive, but it's certainly something we can, we can look at. And then, we're always looking at our fees and charges, and of course, I do want to take the opportunity at this point because it was raised. Annually, we would normally do our increase, our COLA increase on our user fees and charges, subject to the Mitigation Fee Act. We would normally do that in April because it requires a 60-day notice and public hearing. We're holding off on that, given what's happened, because that's a direct increase on all of our user fees to our developers and our development community. So, unless you give us direction otherwise, we're holding off on that annual increase that would have been an increase that occurs July 1st.
Anyone else have questions, comments? Not just on golf, which seems like the subject of many meetings in different ways. Councilmember Middleton.
Golf's been the subject of many meetings, and I support trying to eliminate or at least narrow the subsidy we're providing over and above what we have to spend on the debt service. But as we have found with every golf course that starts to go fallow, beginning with the Palm Springs Country Club, it's really easy to talk about conversion to other use and extremely difficult to execute it.
Anyone else with any questions or comments? Mayor Fortim Holsditch.
Thank you. So, this is for any questions or comments about this item before we move on, is that right?
Yeah, at the end, I think it would make sense to sort of summarize and go through and make sure staff understands what we're looking for as well, but we can do questions and comments before that, and then I'll try and go through my notes.
Okay, thanks. Where to begin? I had a question, there was public comment about priority-based budgeting, and I was just wondering if the subcommittee or staff looked at that at all or if these are the models that we should use going forward. I am interested also in what other cities are doing to forecast in 30-day increments what's happening to our economy and, you know, what measures we should use to do that.
Mayor Fortim Holsditch, I would, you know, answer that with, you know, the budget is based on the priority and performance aligned with what we believe are the strategic directions of the council in the function. So, I have a high comfort level that it's very So I have a high comfort level that it's very priority-based, so now we're in this, just this realignment. That's one, in terms of what some of the other cities are doing, and again, where Palm Springs is a little unique, for example, in speaking with La Quinta, they're looking at about an eight million dollar deficit where we have the 47 or almost 78. Palm Desert is about the same, so they're not even planning any personnel cuts at this point. So we're a little unique in the valley. Obviously, there are other cities like Santa Monica that have significant issues. Mostly the tourism-related cities are the ones that are feeling the brunt of that. That being said, to answer your question, how we would deal with this, basically on a monthly basis, we track our revenues every month and we will be doing that with a very, very sharp eye and I think it should be actually an agendized item every month for city council meeting.
I agree, thank you. One other general question I had was about, I didn't see any discussion about our investment and any access we might have. I know we went over, we go over our cash on hand, our investments in the market, other types of investments. We talked about property already, but was that looked at or is it not available to us?
So Mayor Protem Holstich, philosophically, I take no risk with the tax dollars whatsoever and I have held tight to that and finance director have held me down and pinned me down and tickled me till I agreed to let them do a little bit more, which we've done over the years. So Nancy, if you could maybe join us and talk about, Nancy has done some things a little bit differently over the past couple of years that have given us some additional revenue and investments. Nancy, could you explain?
Yes, we currently switched over to using an investment firm to assist us with these investments. So we currently, because of the rates with Cal Trust right now, it's about 2.2, 2.5, which is higher than the bonds. So right now, we have currently 32 million, which we're going to invest in bonds. So we're working with the investment company right now to figure out what investments we want to make because the bond rates are so low right now.
We are, it's a sort of a very regulated what we can and can't do with the public's dollars, but to the, there is a certain level of flexibility we have and I do believe that Nancy is stretching and reaching us to that additional interest.
Exactly.
But there's no, there's no assets or investments we could liquidate to get cash to cover our expenses?
Position right now, we have pretty liquid cash right now, so we don't need to sell any of the bonds currently at this time. So we have enough cash on hand to last us at least another year without having to sell any bonds.
So for example, our cash balance is over 130 million.
Correct.
But again, the only part of that that we could use, even if we liquidated it, is that 30-some million in general fund reserves and the 16 in the purse, so that restricts us in that way.
Correct. I think the investment report is included in the packet for last, coming up in the next council meeting. We have about 121, 130 million, but that's throughout all funds, which including the airport and wastewater and all that. So if you're looking at what do we have in the general fund, as Dr. Reddy said, it is what our fund balance is.
I was just looking for other pots of money that we might be able to use to cover our shortfalls. Clearly, it sounds like that's not an option.
Well, I would add, and we haven't discussed this, but one possible pot of money is you do have the ability to borrow from the wastewater treatment plant. Now, that's, that would be a more of a, I wouldn't say last resort, but so for example, there's probably about 20 million dollars, you could use that as a bridge, but you would have to pay that back. So you'd probably have to pay that back over a 10-year period. So for example, you borrowed 10 million, you're paying it back a million over 10 years with a pretty reasonable interest rate. That is an option, but again, that is a payment that would have to be due because we'd have to make that whole fund whole.
So we'd be borrowing more money than all the hundreds of millions of other debt we have?
Yes.
Not the best solution.
Thanks, but yeah, I was just asking, I didn't see it in the staff report or address. I think that's all the questions I had. I just had a few comments that maybe for next time. We did get public comment about Measure D and I know we proposed Measure D to the community for public safety and I think people had some questions, so maybe we could just have a portion of the staff report for next time, talk about Measure D. And then I was wondering on page three, it has the adopted revenue and our percentages that we spend on general government, on police and fire, on parks and rec. And I was just wondering how that compares to other cities. So maybe next time, we could have sort of a comparison about what percentage comparable cities are spending on parks and rec, on police, on fire, on general government, just so we can have some comparisons. I think that would be helpful. Those are all the kind of general questions and comments that I have.
As long as you're on.
I just have a few more questions and then I'm done. There's a few things that were mentioned, things to get rid of in one of the scenarios. One of them was a skate park. I'm wondering if we have information on how often skates are used, just more information about it, because I know that when it was built, it was a big deal, we were all super excited about it. I was a teenager and I don't know, I just don't know what it's like anymore. I don't know how, if we could get more information about that and find out if that is something another organization would be willing to take on and run in some way. I would be interested in hearing about that. The other thing is just, what is the legislative fellow program? I just don't even know what.
Councilmember Gardner, if I could, and thank you for the question on the skate park because I do need to clarify. We have a contractor at the skate park that basically operates it and we did that because when we opened it, we were having problems with, you know, there was some bullying going on and some vandalism and so what we thought was we were going to have someone there basically monitoring and we brought this company in because they could actually be there and they had programs and they did events and they did those kinds of things. So that was the contract that we had. What the parks director was recommending is that if we did not have that contract, the skate park will remain open and we will be using our staff to, in essence, to monitor the skate park, but there just wouldn't be the kinds of programs and things that we were having currently. So the skate park remains open, it would just be operated differently with city staff.
And can you just explain what the legislative fellow program is? So I understand why I don't need to miss it?
It never got, it was money set aside for that, that just never got filled.
Oh, okay.
We have not had someone.
Okay, well, thank you. That's too bad, but.
Yeah.
And then the last thing that I just want to mention, again, we're talking about working with different partners in the community and not just focusing on only Palm Springs. I am very interested in finding out what Palm Springs High School and the Palm Springs Unified School District as a whole is interested in the swimming pool. I think that if the school district would be willing to take over the swimming pool because so many of the people who use it are our children, our water pool, our swim team, I think that would be great if it would be something that would allow it to continue on at a similar rate, for instance, as it is now, instead of getting cut under us. So I would just really like to be able to open up that discussion with the school district and find out how possible that is. I think, I'm pretty sure the Cathedral City campus, high school campus, has a pool on campus for their students, so the school district certainly knows how it all works, so I'm wondering if we can just do that here.
Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would second that we should look at other alternatives to the operation of the swim center, but it is, again, a legacy institution that we need to preserve. I'm looking at page 12 and 13 of the staff report and there are a number of items and some have already been mentioned, but number seven calls for the elimination of the grants and sponsorship funding and I just simply want to indicate I am fully supportive of that. I hate to see it go in some respects and in others, it has just been incredibly gruesome trying to make decisions regarding that. I am supportive of everything that is on 12 and 13, but I do have some questions about number 11, the CVP sponsorship of 325,000 dollars. Is that a complete elimination of our CVP partnership?
That would be a complete elimination and again, that's broken down into the 200,000 for the IHUB and the 125 is what, again, this is an older agreement where all the cities would put in 125. Palm Springs is one of the few cities that actually has done that over the years, so, but that would be the full amount.
I'd like to see us work with CVP and see if there are some alternatives to a complete elimination. If we're going to grow an alternative to the tourism economy in this region, we've got to make investments and I don't know anything that is providing a more potential for development of new industry than what we see with CVP. And I will make note with number nine, ending any subsidy of the Buzz Trolley, that as the representative from the city to the Sunline Board, I did this week make sure that the executive director of Sunline knew that this was a probability.
Great, thank you. So just as we look at that list, a couple of comments as well, you know, I think if for CVP really needs to be what it was supposed to be, a Coachella Valley entity and the other cities who aren't taking the hits we have but aren't putting money into it, you know, whether this needs to be tied closer with CVP, but we can't have a situation where, you know, we're having a 40% cost cut in our budget and even in hard times, we were one of three cities who maintained the promise to Roy's homeless shelter, which is why it failed, because everyone else pulled out and we can't always be the city to do that, especially at times like this. And there may be better uses of economic development money, so we really need some analysis on that. I think CVP does a really good job with what they do, but it's really Coachella Valley wide and it sounds like we're a primary funder of it. On the Film Festival, I did speak with Mr. Matzner and Tourism Today and so, you know, one of the things, just for tourism, you know, our own Bureau of Tourism, we spent about 2 million dollars on. We then gave 500,000 to 600,000 to the Greater Palm Springs Convention of Visitors Bureau. We split the TOT on resort fees from hotels that charge it to create PS Resorts. If we didn't do that, they could stop charging resort fees and just charge it in parking and we'd get zero. So that one tends to work well. And one of the things we talked about in the new contract was instead of us getting 225 back, they would get the full amount, which of course will be reduced this year, and they'd fund all of the economic drivers that they think make the most sense. Because also with grants and sponsorships, not on this list were some of those things. So our contribution to Modernism Week, our contribution to Pride, our contribution to Tour de Palm Springs, I think there's one other one that I may be forgetting. But in speaking to the chairman of both the Film Festival and PS Resorts, if the Film Festival gala happens, that is actually owned by the city, not by the Film Festival organization. The gala is owned by the city and that's how it's set up in the contract. They believe through use of the PS Resorts money and some other tourism money, they probably could get to the number to make that happen, if we can make it happen, and that's just an if, so we don't know that yet. As far as tourism, initially, there was thought of a million dollar reduction, so that was cut, but as we see what happens if we're not marketing, there will be more money there that will become available. And the other thing, which I think we've shared with council and the public before, but given the director of the Bureau of Tourism retired and we took the opportunity to have an assessment done of all of our tourism spending, figure out how we maximize our dollars in the most effective manner. And that's due to get to us sometime next week. So I talked to city manager about seeing if we can even get a preliminary so we have that information as we look at this issue, as we look at the budget next week. There was also the supplement that the city manager sent, I just want to raise those, some of these are on it. So one thing which we haven't really talked much about is temporarily closing Wellwood Murray at a savings of 100,000 a year as one option. We didn't really talk about the 1.9 million annual that could be saved if we, a year, if we temporarily closed Station 5, which reopened, I think, in 2016. That was in the supplement report. Reduction in the swim center cost by running that with a, potentially doing an RFP for a nonprofit to run it, the way Palm Desert does, where it's believed from staff, we'd get several hundred thousand dollars in savings, which would help keep that open. So those are all things that are on the table from staff, but I just want to make sure the public's aware of as we move forward through this. So it sounds like for the city manager, we'd like to keep at least a 10% reserve of the reduced budget, but we want to make sure from our bond person that that's not going to impact our bond rating, we want to know what that minimum amount is, that there's general consensus on use of Measure J money to help for this year. We know there's very little Measure J money coming in next year because of the impact on the economy to sales tax. We would like to see more things kept open, just summarizing, even at a lesser extent than closing things entirely like community centers, pools, library. And we want to sort of get an assessment of what the various land that we have available, that is land we could sell, not lands like City Hall or the animal shelter or the wastewater treatment plant, which we can't really sell. As we do this, and then there are some requests for more information, but we're going to need to come up with that, you know, 47 million dollars and then assess it. Of course, it'll be easier to add things back if things get better. The longer we wait to make reductions, the more reductions we'll have to make to get the same savings. And, you know, I think every one of us, me included, is going to see things we would really like to see not cut, cut. There is no area that, as Councilman McConner said, is going to be spared. And, you know, our job, as much as we want to advocate for things, is ultimately that we have to prioritize. I mean, every budget we've ever done is prioritizing some things over others. This one is a much harder prioritization, but that's what we're going to need to do next week. I would like to suggest to council, given the interest that this will now have in the community, which is why we didn't want to make decisions tonight, that we think about starting council at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock next Thursday, because if we have two or three hours of public comment, I think there were eight at the county over, they're lifting the face covering rules. You know, we're at 10:30 at night, we started at 4:30 and we've gotten through one discussion item with no decisions. So I would suggest we start at 3:00 o'clock next Thursday if people are able to, so we can give the public the opportunity to chime in and also that we do a real effort, the lead thing on the homepage is for people can... is for people can submit their public comment on the homepage, and that gets to us ahead of time, so we can read it and think about it instead of at the meeting, and that's really helpful as well. And encourage people just not, if you hear someone saying the same thing, not have 20 people repeat the exact same thing, because we understand the passion we all have here. We want everyone's input, but to the extent, do it by email, we'll be able to have a much more thorough conversation while people are still awake, including, you know, young people who are impacted by these decisions. But when we're making decisions at midnight or 1:00 in the morning, no one's at their best, and not too many people are staying awake to hear them. So, if we can start at 3:00 next Thursday, is that good with everyone? Thank you. And city manager, do you have any other questions?
Sure, sure. On that, Mayor, members of council, would you, then would we start closed session at 2:00, or we could have closed session after the council meeting?
So, I would suggest, if it works, is we do a special closed session on Monday afternoon at 4:00 to go through any issues that need to be discussed in closed session, and if there's something comes up between then and Thursday, we can either start a little earlier or do it after the end of the meeting. Does that work for everyone? I just want to make sure we maximize the discussion.
Could we have the city attorney, is Monday?
We could, on, we could do it on Monday?
Okay. Yeah, the city attorney, are you available for closed session on Monday?
On Monday, yes.
I'm just, I just picked a date. Let me, we should all look at our calendars, Monday, my apologies.
I would just like to encourage we close session before we start the city council meeting. Trying to do any kind of in-depth closed session after council meeting, particularly one that's promised to be five or six hours long, is, is really tough.
So, Monday at 4:00 looks like it works, if it works for others, for special, and then, let's see if we need, if we need one before, we'll reach out to folks to make sure that works for people's schedules. With that, we can move to our next item, which I think we need to do tonight, given we not have more than just the budget next Thursday. Unless anyone objects, should we keep going? People good with that? Okay. So, now, the next issue is discussion of the Community Development Block Grant, 2020 to 2024 Five-Year Consolidated Plan, the 20 to 21 Annual Action Plan, the Citizen Participation Plan, and CDBG 2021 Budget Staff Report, please.
Good evening again. Just as a, sort of a recollection of what we've done in the past, on April 2nd, we have held a public hearing to consider the Consolidated Plan, Citizen Participation Plan, and Annual Action Plan. And a core part of that discussion was the allocation of $449,050 for the 2020-2021 Annual Action Plan. Now, since that time, let me say that at that meeting, staff had recommended 305, 552 of that be allocated for public facilities, $43,668 be allocated for fair housing, and $10,000 be allocated for senior repair program, with administrative costs of 20% at $89,810. Now, so, part of tonight's discussion is to determine how to allocate those dollars. But the other part of tonight's discussion is how to allocate recently approved Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act resources that were provided, the CARES Act, that were provided as part of the CARES Act, in the amount of $264,171. However, taking away $52,000 of that, we have a net of $211,337. And you can see these net dollar resources on the screen, if that's up in front of you. And the exercise will be allocating these resources for projects and programs as the council prefers. Now, one of the important distinctions is, is that the CDBG funds can be spent for both COVID-related purposes and for the typical Community Development Block Grant services, such as improving facilities in low-income areas. The other set of funds, the CDBG CV, COVID-related funds, can only be spent on COVID-recovery-related programs and activities. So, that's why there's two columns, and as we go through this process and total these allocations, we're being sensitive to the different types of funds that are in each of the columns, because there are limitations on their use, particularly for the CDBG CV funds. Now, that being said, the types of CDBG CV funding that can be pursued with these dollars include rental assistance, small business assistance, and public services. As I mentioned before, for the non-COVID-related type of programs, staff had recommended investing in facilities, particularly restrooms at Sunrise Park and Demuth Park. However, there are a number of other facilities at these two parks that could use investment, and that would include shade structures, HVAC for the leisure center, door replacements for the leisure center. Those are at Sunrise Park. And at Demuth Park, also the restroom improvements that were previously recommended, air conditioning at the community center, replacement of carpet and flooring, and windows and doors at the Demuth Community Center are also included in those. Or, also, as part of the non-COVID investment, council could decide to allocate the CDBG funds for public and social services. So, with that, I believe you have a couple lists in front of you. One included what other cities had invested the CDBG CV funds into, and we know the top investments of those cities tended to be in rental assistance, small business assistance, and then public service. So, the task at hand is to determine how much of each fund to allocate into these types of projects. So, Mr. Mayor, I would turn it back over to you for questions and direction, and let me add that Mr. Darrell Stamps is also participating in the discussion for any technical CDBG questions you may have.
Great, thank you, Mr. Pro. Questions, comments, ideas? Councilmember Middleton?
A question for Jay. When the CARES Act gives us greater discretion as to how the money, this money can be used, define for me the range of public services that we can use these funds for now because of the CARES Act that we could not previously use them for.
Well, the major difference, Councilmember Middleton, is that the cap on the 15% public services has been eliminated. So, now, instead of limiting expenditures to just 15% of the allocation, the majority more, excluding administrative costs and fair housing costs, can be used for public services. And in the past, we have used those to fund nonprofit organizations for services in the community, which include financial assistance when individuals cannot pay their rent, or utilities. Jewish Family Services Center has provided that service for us in the past, and, and, you know, beyond that, the balance of the funds have typically, typically gone towards capital-type of projects. So, now with that 15% cap lifted, we can spend much more on public services.
Okay, thank you. I'll have comments, but that's the end of my questions.
You can do them all together.
All right. I'm supportive of the recommendation to use $300,000 of this funding for the bathrooms at Sunrise and Demuth Park. We know how horrific the condition of those bathrooms are, and I would like to see that project get completed. I'm also very supportive of the funding for the city's home repair program.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mayor Porte.
Try to wait to see if anyone else wants to jump in. Thank you. You know, this is, I think that there's a lot of decisions in front of us, and it's hard, because we know that we definitely need bathroom repairs, and we know that Measure J and our other sources of funds to do that is going away for that purpose. It'd be helpful to know from staff what are, you know, the life, existing life of those bathrooms are, and when we need to make those investments. We get CDBG funding next year, so, you know, is that something that staff would recommend that we do right now with this CDBG funding in a crisis? Should we wait and defer that for a year, and can we, what's the impact? I haven't made a decision. I'm really open. I don't know if I'm ready to make a decision on this right now, and if we have to. I'm interested in taking the opportunity to address the crisis, like rent relief or business support, like other cities have done. La Quinta did a million-dollar allocation for business support. Again, I'll keep saying it, we have to support our businesses so that we have revenue in the future, and we can go back to where we were versus really shrinking down forever. That's my concern for renters, that we lose long-term residents because they can no longer afford, or they get evicted. So, I have a lot of questions about that. Maybe staff can answer. I know we've been through this process for a long time, the situation's changing every day. If you could, and I didn't see if there was still a staff recommendation to go forward with the park improvement, and then could you explain the process? So, do we have to make a decision on this tonight? Should we? Is there more information that staff could provide on some of those programs that might be possible with this funding?
A schedule, but it, there's, there's some margin to come back with additional information, if that's what the council prefers. The current schedule has us coming, posting, after you make decisions on these allocations, we would incorporate that into the Annual Action Plan for next year, and then publish that for public review for five days. And with that five-day review, gather the public comments, and come back to council for its approval. And we were anticipating June 11th for that approval. So, we, we may even, given that we're having a meeting, I'm not sure if next week we'd do it, continue the discussion then, and tack it on to the budget discussion also, have some additional information for you at that point. But, you know, I think we're open to your direction on that.
Thanks. So, here's from Ali. I just have one other question. So, public comment raised that there's ESG funding, emergency services, grant funding, there's FEMA dollars, which I know that we're receiving. There's county money, that the county is getting a lot of money through FEMA and through the CARES Act. So, I know you can't answer all of that right now, but if we do bring it back, or the next time it goes forward, or the next step in the process, maybe we could have some of that conversation, too, because there's some overlap with what we're doing right now, what we could supplement our general fund for, you know, or where we need to look for savings, and what this money can do versus what other money can do.
FEMA resources, we cannot use these dollars to duplicate what FEMA is being used for, but in most cases, the FEMA resources are only for emergency response.
But isn't FEMA being used for housing, homelessness services, food services, other types of social services?
Yes, to the extent that they are helping with responding to the healthcare crisis, providing housing for homeless, to reduce the spread of coronavirus. I'm not sure how long that resources will be, that resource will be available, but you're correct. There's, they are FEMA resources maybe used, as you're saying.
We don't have access to those FEMA resources.
They're on a reimbursement basis, so we, we do not have direct allocation of FEMA dollars.
For, for our direct expense, but we can't, you, we don't have access to any dollars to use for
That's correct.
homeless or to help, that's, we just want to be clear.
Yes.
Okay, so the only dollars we have are these block grant COVID, you could use those, and that's the only access we have?
That's correct, right.
That's helpful. I don't, I think, I, the community doesn't fully understand what we can be reimbursed for. For example, people are asking, why are, why is the county doing homelessness? Well, they can get fully reimbursed for that, so that would be helpful for us to know, maybe at the next meeting or in a future one, if there's other pots of money we could access.
Councilmember McConner?
Thank you. Apologies if there's a little overlap. I've got foster kittens, and they were very loud when Mayor Porte was talking. So, I, I agree that we, we want to do, that it's important to, to support our small business, businesses, and, and one of the things I was just kind of curious about here is, because it's really not a lot of money. And, and so I'm just curious, if we're going to move that route of supporting small businesses, for instance, is it going to be helpful, and how many of those small businesses are we actually going to be able to support? And then, what would be that process? So, if, if they were, if they are doing this expansion to the government, then would they not be eligible for this grant from the federal government? That is, because I almost feel like it's not worth it if it's such a small amount, that it's not actually going to really help any, any business, because they're, they're only going to get a minuscule amount of money. And, and then in that case, it might make more sense to help people directly with rent, because it could have a larger impact. So, when we're talking about supporting, using funds for COVID-related issues, I, I just want to kind of think about what is going to have the greatest impact for our residents. And I'm just not sure that it's enough for small businesses, as much as I agree that it, we need to support them. As far as the other funding, I also agree that I kind of want to know what's the biggest need, because I know that, for instance, air conditioning at Demuth is really important as well, and that's something that's been lacking for a long time, and I'd like to see that funded. And the restrooms, of course, but I, I am very interested in, in, in doing the restrooms and the air conditioning, just things that are going to be very useful for our residents in the upcoming year or so. Because I do think that we are going to see an increase in people using our, our public, our public parks, and, and like I've already mentioned before, I think we will see more people using the community centers.
We provide the example of Buena Park, which is providing grants to businesses up to $10,000. So, for every $100,000 allocated, 10 businesses would be assisted. And on, on the Buena Park example, only businesses that could prove that they were not able to access the economic injury disaster loans or payroll protection programs, the PPP to access the economic injury disaster loans or payroll protection programs, the PPPs through the SBA, only those businesses would be eligible for the grant.
Thank you. That's helpful. I do share the concern, you know, for being able to help 30 businesses out of thousands, and how we're going to pick among those is going to be a bit of a challenge. I do agree, though, you know, coming up with creative ways to help our businesses survive this, and I really appreciate all the resources we've been providing to them, but as far as information, but at this point, we don't have any concrete resources, and this is just not enough to do that. I think in using it for, you know, rent or mortgage relief, we have some of the same issues on how we're going to decide who gets it and how much. So I'd really like to know how we're going to do that and make those decisions, what house debt we would run. Do you have any thoughts on that at this point, Jay? This is in here.
Difficult decisions. Let me ask Mr. Stamps if he's come across that with any of the other cities he's worked with. He's on the line? Okay.
You're live with the council, Mr. Stamps.
Welcome.
Hello, council. This is Daryl Stamps. Could be with you tonight. And I guess the question is, how do we, how do we use the resources to assist individuals as it relates to their, their rent? Is that the question?
Yeah, I guess it's if we have a couple hundred thousand dollars towards helping people pay rent and stay in their homes, how would we, what kind of process would we set up to determine who among tens of thousands of people who might want it, get it with limited resources?
As Jay mentioned, it is a very difficult process. That would be obviously a decision the council would come up with. We've seen cities come up with lottery, providing a lottery process for, for residents. The first example, the first 100 individuals who apply for the assistance, and if you only have resources for 75, then you may pick out, pick out 90 and sort of go through the process of determining how you would assist the 75 individuals. So it is a, it is a challenging process, because the resources that you do have is not enough to probably assist all the individuals that will ask for assistance. What I can tell you from a procedural standpoint, council, is that you're only able to assist an individual for three months by statute, and the rent assistant can't go directly to the individual. It has to go to the owner of the apartment, or if you're looking to help commercial, the commercial industry, you have to be the owner of the commercial building, but it cannot go directly to, to the individual. So that's from a procedural standpoint, but you're absolutely correct. There's, the, the need is much greater than the resources, and so, you know, the, a process that makes it fair, it's, it's, it's going to be tough.
Jay, also, didn't you say that some cities use a third-party nonprofit? Could you explain that?
That's correct. Some cities just have, banks manage the loan aspect of it. Some cities have nonprofits who do this. As I mentioned, Jewish Family Services does provide resources like this, and we have worked with them before. Now, that was before there was a big demand for resources like this. So, Mr. Mayor, I would think one of the criteria would be to avoid homelessness, evidence of an individual's tendency, there being an eviction, but that's complicated with our moratorium on evictions if landlords aren't writing eviction letters.
That I would note is, you know, based on the hiring freeze that we've talked about, we really have very, very little staff in community development at this point. So I, I would really question if we had the capacity to actually even implement this, this kind of program.
Okay, that's helpful. And just one question, since we do anticipate from the last meeting that we'll be getting the state homelessness grant soon, and I think we allocated 15% to rental assistance to avoid homelessness, that gives us probably a bigger pool of money that we might, you know, we're thinking of using that over several years, but given this crisis, we might want to make more of that available sooner as well. So I just want to throw that out for, as we think about this. But I do agree, by the way, I think with Councilmember Garner Middleton's comments, I think people will be using parks and libraries. I think the bathrooms at those two locations are just beyond horrendous, and no air, you know, the air conditioning issue at Demuth really makes it, limits its usefulness as well. So I want to keep those on the table, you know, as we move forward, at least. Councilmember Garner, and then Councilmember Woods.
Thank you. If for the homelessness money that you just, you mentioned, would we still need somebody, a third party, to try to help us out with giving that money out? Would we still have that same issue? I'm just curious if we can have a kind of a, a list of a couple of, two or three organizations that would even be willing to do this. Because it's true, we don't have support. I don't know how we can make it happen.
I do think there's a little more admin probably available in that grant, so let's try and get the details of that to discuss when we bring, when this comes back, whether it's for a hearing or whatever, so we know that issue as well. I agree with you.
I'm sorry. One more element of that would be that we are coordinating with the county, the COC, and the city of Riverside, who are also recipients of the H hap resources. And to the extent that they have, whether it be the county or the COC, rental assistance program, we may be able to work with them on that.
Great. It would be great if we could get, to find that out for us. That would be really helpful, Jay.
If I can, can just add on that comment. I know that United Way is doing a rental assistance program for the entire Coachella Valley, so we might want to look at. I agree, I think it's great to look at the homelessness grant, the $10 million. I think that there's now allowances that we can change or have more emergency use of those funds, but the United Way or other similar organizations might be a good option if we don't, can't administer it. Just a thought.
Yep, all good ideas. So Jay, if you could get us some more information, when, you know, if the way to do this is to notice a hearing, bring it back, or bring it back for another discussion, whatever staff thinks makes the most sense, but just having that information will enable us to make the decisions. Councilmember Woods.
Just, I wanted to add a little bit so that, I think we're all on the same page and that we all really would like to see the bathrooms and the air conditioning fixed. There's, there's no other funding for those at this point, and this funding is relatively small. The other programs that we're talking about are, there, there might be a lot of redundancy and a lot of things that might knock people in and out of certain programs if they took certain funding. So I'm, I'm leaning more towards the, the hard improvements, especially with what we're going into, where we want people to, to maintain our parks and use our parks and whatnot. I just, there's just, we have a lot of redundancy in a lot of our organization overall, and I'd like to really remove redundancies and go where we don't have funding, and we do not have funding currently for the bathrooms, you know, or the air conditioning. But that's, ever since I've been on council, the air conditioning at Demuth has been an issue. Yeah, so that's it. Mr. Mayor.
No, I think it's helpful, especially if we have other access for rental assistance to avoid homelessness coming. And I, I agree, we really need it done by, the county would be ideal, or United Way has the expertise to make sure that it's going to the right people and not creating an issue that they're not thinking about because they're getting this assistance as well. You know, we need the experts to be doing that. So what do you need from us, David, Jay?
Well, so we're, we're hearing, it's sounding like there is a preference to keep the CDBG dollars used towards the capital facilities. And just for example purposes, I went on and then filled in the restrooms at Sunrise and Demuth, but that leaves the 211,000 that has to be spent on the COVID-related type of uses. So that's the area where we'll bring back more information and hopefully, you know, we can revisit that. But, but as you've pointed out, there are rental assistance resources coming our way, and so those would not help with the business assistance. So, you know, just a few things to think about, that we may be pretty healthy with residential rental assistance, but with other business assistance out there, if we're allocating the entire $211,000 to that, that may be more helpful than just kind of splitting the baby, so to speak, and doing $100,000 for residential and $100,000 for business.
If I can, you know, that was my comment, that we needed, I think it's impossible with this information in front of us to do anything other than fund the bathrooms and the air conditioning, and that's because the impact of the program isn't explained. So we don't know how many people we could help with rental assistance, or how, how many businesses $5,000 could get, so, help. So it's difficult. That's what my initial comment is. I'm not opposed, I hear the council is moving forward on the bathrooms and AC, which I think are crucial. But in the future, it would be helpful to have more information to really assess these types of programs, because I want to push back a little bit. You know, the county is getting a lot of money, but they're not providing currently rental assistance. I believe that they do have a business assistance program. They had it on one of their last agendas, but only for $1 million for the entire county. So I agree with Councilmember Woods, there's redundancy for sure. We should look at that. That's why I asked, you know, how can we fund other services? For example, I think it's really important to keep funding the food pantry, mobile pantry at James O'Donnell, at Highland. Maybe we could use that funding to do it with the CDBG coronavirus fund. So, yeah, maybe we can just get more information on that when it comes forward.
I agree.
So Jay, for example, we could use that for the food distribution? Okay, so, so those are the things that, and that's why I could use your help on, council. Those are the things that we can do, but the other things, we're going to have to have a third-party or nonprofit help us with. So, so whether it's like rental assistance and things of that nature, we'd have to be prepared to send that out. The things like the, the, the funding, the food bank, we, we could do.
Yes, we already have that.
Okay.
Let's look at those.
Is that it on this one? Or do you need something else?
On the capital, so again, the, the restrooms and the air conditioning would take all of, all of this, all of this money, correct?
That's correct.
One of the restrooms? And which one, just to be clear, which, which one would we be doing? We recommend, recommend Demuth, as opposed to the one at Highland was the new one, correct?
Highland is not an eligible...
Right, that's not the eligible, it was the...
Sunrise.
Sunrise.
Sunrise and Demuth, and so keep in mind that your last item, we basically swept all the capital funds that were programmed for Demuth ADA upgrades and restroom upgrades. So it's, it's good that you're focusing on that with the CDBG funds, because that's really the limited funds that are left. So if I'm hearing you correctly, then we would, we would identify the air conditioning at Demuth and then the, the restrooms at Demuth, and that would eat up the, basically the $300,000 that's available for public facility improvements, with the focus being next time on how we can really use the social service program funds that are out of the additional COVID CDBG funds.
Got it.
We identified those at about $150,000. That would be to basically reconstruct the restrooms that are near the pickleball and tennis courts. That's what we would anticipate to use those funds for.
We haven't done any projects at that low of amount of restrooms before, so I... Another caveat, just by the way, council, so on the air conditioning at, at Demuth, just, just so you know, I mean, I think you recognize that that's going to increase pretty significantly the, the energy costs at, at Demuth, once we do that. That's the cost of doing business, yeah.
Councilmember Garner.
I just want to make sure I'm clear on the numbers here. So our regular CDBG funds could go for Demuth restrooms and AC, but then we would still have the coronavirus fund in which we would do something with. And that could potentially be rental assistance, or maybe not, because we have other funds for rental assistance. And I'm just a little confused about where that extra funding is going.
So we can use it for any of those things on the list? So it could be, obviously, it could be rental assistance, it could be to expand or extend food banks. Those are some of the things that we mentioned as possibilities.
Okay. Okay, so there's not a clear consensus then on, on what?
I think we needed more information on, like, what would it look like if we went to the county or United Way and said, okay, what could you do for this money to help Palm Springs residents who might be evicted without rental assistance?
Okay, thank you. I just got kind of sidetracked from that.
Yeah, and I would probably keep that rental assistance as well as, you know, getting food to folks on the list, for, for certain. You know, if you can come back with a way that we actually could help enough businesses for enough money to have an impact, but it doesn't sound like we have that currently.
No, I think the coronavirus money alone is so minimal to do really any of that work, but I agree that funding for food banks, so what we're funding should be considered as well as some, you know, we're losing a lot of rental support as well, because we've funded in the past Jewish family services through CDBG to provide those services, and we've also, we've also funded them through our grants and sponsorships. So if that's going away, and this is where we need to do the cost-benefit analysis, right? Like, what's the cost on homelessness, which the county will have to pay, but, you know, for getting rid of some of those programs? We actually are losing rental assistance in this budget and, and not gaining it, but we do have those homelessness funds, which I agree is a better use of those funds than this.
So David and Jay, are we good?
More information.
Do you need a motion? What do you need?
Not at this time. This was a discussion item and to provide staff with direction. So we have half of it, I believe, and we owe you a little more information on the impact of what each of these investments might make.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, does anyone else have any requests, questions, anything for staff? Okay, Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like for us to adjourn the meeting this evening in the honor of Amy Stevens, who passed away this week. Ms. Stevens came out as transgender in 2013. She was immediately fired. Uh, she was immediately fired, uh, what was, uh, perhaps, uh, different in her case is her employer didn't, uh, try to hide his true motivations and made it very clear, uh, that she was being fired because she was transgender. Uh, ultimately, her case, uh, went to the United States Supreme Court, and, uh, she was present in October, uh, for the oral arguments. Uh, she did not live long enough to hear what the final dispensation, uh, will be from the Supreme Court.
Thank you for that. Um, so we will adjourn the meeting to our regular city council meeting on May 21st at 3:00 PM. Um, and I see that the spotlight already has how to do public comment, so thank you to Amy Blaisfield, our communications director, for getting that up so quickly, uh, from the request on the desk. And, uh, everyone, stay safe and be well. Connect.
Thank you. Connect.
Thank you.